Okay, it is six o'clock on. I'm not sure why that's echoing. Try that again? Okay. I'm muted and the sound is off.
Sound is off.
And it's still echoing.
Should George mute?
Should George mute?
What?
What?
No, that's fine.
That's fine.
Chelmsford, tell Amelia, can you figure out why I'm echoing? The laptop mic is off. And this one's not even connected.
You know what, I'm muted. I'm echoing too.
Yeah, we're all echoing. Does somebody in the room, are you, do you have your mic?
I have no sound on. I have no audio connected.
Not on your?
I have no audio connected.
Okay, it seems to have subsided. Okay, it being 6:01 on January 24th, I will call this meeting of the Chelmsford Select Board to order. Would you please join me in a pledge?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice.
Okay, and just for the record, we have all five board members present this evening, with Board Member Dixon participating on Zoom. We also have joining us Town Council Paul Haverdy, Finance Director John Souza, and Town Accountant Darlene Luzier. So we will start with public input. Is there anyone who would like to speak during public input? Just I remind everyone, please clearly state your name and address for our recording secretary.
Madam Chair, is it appropriate to provide a feedback or update on another committee at this point?
You can speak on anything that's not on the agenda, that, well, yeah, if you're not on the agenda, you can speak to anything that you want. You have about three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair. I'm members of the Select Board. My name is Badri Upliupan. I am the Chair of the CES Committee that was established by the Select Board on advising the Select Board on Net Zero 2050 strategies as per the June 2021 town meeting resolution. We were formed in October of 2021, and I want to take a few minutes to update you on the progress so far that the committee has achieved. If a written report or another meeting is required, we shall do so happily. The CES Committee has been meeting twice a month. Meetings are posted. The Mission Membership website is currently coming online, either has come online late last week or will be online this week from the town website. Committee members have volunteered to be liaisons or observers to various other town committees at this point, and we'll be reaching out in the next one month to update them on the mission, the vision, and where we are headed with that especially. Some of the town meeting, town government officials have been hearing from us in terms of questions and other types of activities. I wanted to give you a quick update. We are working towards a net zero roadmap. Several other communities neighboring to us have already published their own net zero 2050 strategy roadmap. The committee members are reviewing these, as well have also looked and tried to understand much of the building performance contract that the town has for the municipal operations, but we're also looking at how best to go forward with the residential side and some of the commercial side. In terms of producing a greenhouse gas profile, we are going to take advantage of the recent Regional Planning Association grant that NEMCOG received, and one of the activities that they will be doing, I spoke with them last week, and we will try and leverage their help and the framework that they use of the Metropolitan Area Plan Committee Framework for assessment of GHE and the next steps. So we'll do that and provide that at an appropriate time as we get through that. We're also reviewing our options. One of the favored pathways that many communities are looking at is to improve town aggregation and improve the amount of renewable electricity in the choice programs for the community, and we are also studying what our current participation and what tactic strategies we might be able to use going forward with the town of Chelmsford and the residents, and how to convince them to adopt more renewable electricity as part of this in the coming future. We'll have some recommendations or we'll reach out to Select Board and town officials as is appropriate in this case. We think that going forward, we are thinking and looking at other towns that probably going into the next cycle in the 2023, 2026, there may be a need to increase the amount of renewable energy in there and make that as a default option, but we obviously have to weigh the balance between cost versus impact that we have to think about it. We're also studying.
One minute, Badri.
Sure. Do you have a question?
No, she's open.
One minute, one minute. Yeah. We're also looking at outreach and education as our activity forward. We are trying to check in with various vendors, consultants, other cooperators that may be, and stakeholders to figure out what is best to look at various technologies or policies that might help the residents adopt more net zero friendly building technologies or various home systems. That's important. Two key areas that I'd like to highlight here that maybe, that should be on the radar for the town government as well as for Select Board and other committee members, one is improved decision making. And when I say improved decision making, it's basically about being cognizant of the environmental impact of any of the projects or funding sources or policies that we enact and looking at that. And potentially, one of the things that you, the various committees can look at, and one that we try to study a little bit more and provide guidance, will be on the Task Force on Climate-Related Financial Disclosures, setting sort of like a carbon pricing or something like that to understand the impact that we're doing. And also would like to encourage Select Board, town managers, and others appropriately to work with legislative activities whereby we can push for more stringent codes or actually adopt some home rules like towns of Concord or Acton or Brookline are taking up as part of some of these things. So if those are on agenda, or you would need help with that, we would very much appreciate the foresight and ability to work with you, to seek your counsel, suggestions on how we might be able to draft that. And if there's something that we can do even on spring meeting, I don't know if spring meeting is too late at this point to come up with something and study things, we'll reach out and see if that's possible, if the warrant is not out and if it's not too late, we'll do that. I believe the warrant is coming up close to signature at this point, but if there's something we can do, that would be great. That's the quick update. I may have something on the other development activities, but I'll probably reserve those comments for later on at that point.
Thank you for the update. We're not able to engage in discussion and public comments, so if it makes sense to put you on a future agenda, we can do that.
Yes, please do at any time, and we'll certainly be happy in the next meeting or whichever it is appropriate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak during public input? Sue Olson in the Zoom room? You're muted, Sue.
Hi, my name is Sue Olson. My address is 140 Groton Road in North Chelmsford. And I'm just wanted to speak with the Board really quickly regarding an agenda item under reports and presentations, namely the monthly traffic safety committee report. Part of the discussion on the report includes a suggestion or item about Lynn Avenue being a one-way street. I just question the purpose of that and, you know, why the traffic committee is, has that on their agenda. I don't know whether there had been any traffic studies done on Lynn Avenue, you know, what would precipitate this. I know that Lynn Avenue also has a truck exclusion. I'm not quite sure how much more we would need to do for Lynn Avenue, but my main concern is increased traffic, the flow of traffic would go from, what I understand, from Main Street up Lynn Ave and then either left or right onto Groton Road. If the traffic is funneled in that direction and they end up taking a right, it's going to come down Groton Road, turn right onto Main Street at the Triangle Store. At this point in time, we have several bus stops in this area. There's a rather large one, a large number of kids that get on right in front of the triangle for Nishoba. There's a stop behind the store, there's a stop across the street. I have no idea what the volume of traffic would be, but quite frankly, in this area, at this intersection, adding more traffic, more vehicles, we do get the truck traffic that, you know, can't go down Lynn Avenue, so they come this way. I'm mostly concerned with the school kids, with all the school buses, the bus stops being out here. And my last point is, I would not assume, but I would question whether, if this is approved, either tonight or at some other date, that Lynn Ave does get the one-way stop, I mean, the one-way, it could open the whole ball of wax to the rest of the town. In that, for quite some time, we've been asking for some kind of help with Swain, Dunstable, Groton Road. I would like to see Swain Road considered for a one-way. You know, I just think neighborhoods throughout this town are going to start jumping on that they would like their roads to be one-way. And I think this could open Pandora's Box if it's approved. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I believe Josh Abbott wanted to speak next in the Zoom room?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Josh Abbott, 222 Dalton Road. I'm also the Vice President of the firefighters local 1839. Just wanted to take a brief moment to speak on our request that we put forward. January is Cancer Awareness Month for firefighters. Unfortunately, cancer is the number one line of duty death for firefighters. And we've up with a proposal for a blood screening pool that would, just be a simple blood draw, and our members to go through that screening process, get a baseline, and just catching things early is always good, and then having it said that baseline, go forward and monitor yourself. So thank you for your time. Good night.
Thank you, Josh. Is there anyone else who would like to speak during public input? Okay.
I have a quick question before I make a comment or withdraw. I wanted to know, maybe I still don't understand, can I make some public input on the development agreement on the 255 Princeton Maple, or no?
You can give us input, but it's got to be short, Badri.
Sure, okay, thank you. I'll keep it short. Badri Upliupan, 5 Jerich Lane, Chelmsford. I wanted to highlight, as part of CES or public input also, both at the input session for the planning board, my concern with the development agreement and laws or codes that we have right now, this development will induce significant greenhouse gas emissions as part of it, not development process, but in operational. I know that the developers may look to become more environmentally friendly, but there is no framework by which we can bind it or have a little bit more clarity on whether or not it will happen, or whether they will go into with technologies and building standards that might not be sufficient in terms of reaching our net zero commitments. So if there is any way that Select Board can incorporate that, I'm sure this will come up for discussion even during town meeting and follow on state reviews, but if there's any way that Select Board can incorporate this, it would be appreciated.
Thank you.
Task for the committee. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak during public input? Okay, I see some other people with their video on. I'm assuming you're here for other agenda topics, unless you're waving your hand at me, so I'm going to move on. That brings us to committee vacancies. Ken?
For committee vacancies, as of January 24, 2022, the Arts and Technology Education Fund Committee is looking to fill one three-year seat. Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee has one unexpired three-year term and one three-year term. The CCA Advisory Committee has two one-year terms. Center Village Master Plan Implementation Committee is looking to fill one one-year term. Commissions on Disability has one unexpired three-year term. Community Action Program Committee has one, has three one-year terms. Council on Aging is looking to fill one unexpired three-year term, one three-year term, and five associate member positions. Cultural Council has two, three, two seats for three-year terms. Holiday Decorating Committee has two one-year terms. Parade Committee, all applicants are welcome. Those are one-year terms ending July 31 each year. Public Celebrations Committee is trying to fill five one-year terms. Recycling Committee has one one-year term. Tree Committee has one unexpired three-year term and one three-year term. If anybody has any interest in joining a committee, we ask you to reach out to the town hall here, to the Town Manager's Office at 50 Billerica Road. The phone number is 978-250-5202, or you can send an email to tmoffice@chelmsfordma.gov, or you can go online to the town website and look at the different committees and apply there.
Thank you, Ken. Okay, that brings us to our first public hearing, which is for TC Systems and the Underground Conduit petition for Middlesex Street. Do we have anyone here representing TC Systems? In the Zoom room, I see someone unmuted. Could you just identify your name?
Hi, yes, my name is Haley Walker. I'm here with my colleague Tom Agresta, and I'm speaking on behalf of TC Systems and affiliate of AT&amp;T. And thank you very much for allowing us to present this project before you today. So I will attempt to share my screen.
You're not going to be able to. I have your document up here, and they're taking the television feed from that.
Understood. So yeah, the project will take place on Middlesex Street, beginning at the Verizon Manhole and going to the existing telephone pole. And this will be at a distance of approximately 12 linear feet. We will be in the dirt area, so there will be very little to the, no disturbance to the public right of way. And so this job is to provide service to customers in the area, and all disturbed services will be restored to pre-construction conditions. And with that, if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to take them.
Okay, so this is on behalf of Verizon?
This is on behalf of TC Systems, which is an affiliate of AT&amp;T.
Okay. Any questions from the Board?
So this is for fiber optic cable installation?
Correct.
Have you done any job like this previously in Chelmsford?
To my knowledge, I don't believe we've done, this is our first grant of, or at least my first grant of location with Chelmsford.
Where I got confused and asked you about Verizon is because your cover letter states that you're starting at a Verizon manhole.
Correct. So we're, we applied for a manhole breakout through Verizon. So we will be, we're leasing Verizon conduit in this area. We will be building our own duct and going up the pole.
What type of service uses the fiber optic cable? I mean, this didn't seem like a huge job, and it seemed like it was new to Chelmsford. Is this a new type of service you're bringing in?
So for that, I will have to refer to my colleague, Tom Agresta, who's more familiar with the services that we'll be providing to the area.
Good evening. So the services provided, provided to this area will vary greatly. This is part of a larger construction project. This is one small piece to help us connect several cables. So this could range from anything from cell sites to fiber to the business, as well as other services that AT&amp;T offers.
Thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there any public comment? Mr. Flanio, you're coming up on Zoom. Did you have something to say, or?
No.
Oh, okay. Okay. Seeing none, I will take a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second the motion.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And George votes aye. So that's 5-0. Any further discussion? Paul, do you or your staff see any issue with this?
No, the DPW is examining this. They have no concerns with the installation of the fiber at that location.
If not, then I'll take a motion.
All right. So I'll make a motion that we approve TC System Inc.'s application to install the fiber optic line along Middlesex Street.
I second the motion.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that brings us to licenses. First up, we have the visual license for Mexican Chili on Littleton Road. Do we have anyone here from Mexican Chili?
Yes.
Okay, sir, we just need your name and address, and you want to give us a little bit of, about what you're trying to do here?
He's muted.
No, he's not. He hasn't spoken yet. Mr. Flanio, is that you?
Yes.
Could you give us your name and address, please?
My name is Flanio Silva. My address is 319 East Minister Street, Marlboro, and the Mexican Chili is 313 Littleton Road, 411, and in Chelmsford.
Okay. And I have the wrong file up. So do you want, can we just give a brief overview of what your license application is for?
Yes. Sorry, can I, can I, can you hear me? Because I have some problem with my microphone. My name is Juan Sotero, and I'm talking behind Mexican Chili too.
Yes, now I can hear you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Flanio. That's my brother.
Okay.
We are in 313 of a little town road in Chelmsford, trying to open a, what the name say, a Mexican restaurant. And we are a family business. It's the first time we are trying to open a restaurant, to be honest. We are trying to follow all the instructions that the town give it to us, and we hope we can serve the community as well as we can.
Okay. Are there any questions from the Board?
So you said you have no experience in the restaurant industry?
No, 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 I don't say that. I want to say that it's the first time we're going to open a restaurant, but my brother and my cousin that are my partner, they have been working in restaurants for 15 years and 10 years, so they do have all the experience. I'm not, okay? I'm more like in numbers and that things, but they do have all the experience working in this kind of business for many years.
Mr. Bowles, could you please mute your microphone?
That's about 20, 20 minutes of sound. 25, so.
Is there any further questions from the Board? Okay. Seeing none? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the common vigilance for Mexican Chili to operate at 313 Littleton Road, Chelmsford, Mass.
I'll second the motion.
A motion in a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 5-0. Good luck.
Quick question. I mean, for an alcohol, they'll have to come back.
No, no alcohol.
There's no alcohol.
So if they decided to add that later?
They have to come back.
Yeah, that place is never.
Never. Oh, okay.
They had the walk-in. Remember when it was the Hungarian?
Oh, I remember now.
Okay, so you're all set.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Yep, thank you.
Good luck.
Good night.
Okay, the next is, the next is the change of manager on the all-alcoholic beverages license for Bertucci's. Do we have anyone here from Bertucci's?
Yes, ma'am. Ashley Vega, 39 Ursula Street.
Okay. And this is just, this is a standard change of manager?
Yes. Just took over as PM. Just putting myself on the liquor license.
Nothing else is changing? No hours changes or anything like that?
No, ma'am.
Any questions from the Board? I see no questions.
I'll make a motion to approve the change of manager for the all-alcohol beverage license currently at Bertucci's.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 5-0. Okay, next.
Just say good luck, that's all.
Oh, good luck. You're all set.
Thank you for your time. Stay safe.
Next is the change of date for the one-day all-alcoholic beverages. I don't believe there's anyone here from the church, but we'll check. Okay. This is just a change of date for an existing license that we already issued.
So we have to vote a change in date? Is that the way I'm wording it? All right. So I'll make a motion. Well, does anybody have any questions? I'll make a motion that we approve the change of date for the all-alcohol beverages license already granted to St. Martin's Armenian Church. The new date will be January 29, 2022, from 6 to 10 p.m.
No, that's the old date.
Oh, I'm sorry.
March 12.
March 12.
March 12, from 6 to 10 p.m.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 5-0. Thank you. Okay, next up, we have the development agreements for the Trammell Crow, UMass West Campus Development. And Melissa Robbins, I see you and Mark Baransky in the Zoom room.
Yes.
Oh, excuse me, Melissa, Board Member LaFave is recusing himself. Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Board. For the record, attorney Melissa
Uh, good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Uh, for the record, Attorney Melissa Robbins from the law firm of Farrell and Robbins. Also with me this evening is Attorney James Ward from Nutter McClellan &amp; Fish, as well as, uh, the manager of Tramal Co. Residential, Mark Baransky. Uh, we're here this evening with our final edits to the development agreement. Uh, I think the board has seen all of these changes, but since the last meeting, there were some typographical errors that were brought to our attention, uh, by Member Wojcik and, um, the chairwoman. So we have made those revisions, including changing the dates to 2022, uh, fixing my math, which, uh, the number of affordable units said fourteen. Uh, that was in anticipation of our last discussion where we'd be deciding where that extra money would go. But as you may recall, the money ended up going to the school department. Uh, so I've edited that change back to 12. And then in all other regards, the development agreement stays exactly the same. Now, there was a question two hearings ago of whether or not we could merge these agreements for convenience into one, so that we could have one development agreement for all parties. Uh, which as to form is not a difficult task to take on. Uh, I did agree to do the same after the last meeting. But after the fact, I realized from an underwriting standpoint, in order to finance these projects, both individual entities cannot have a combined development agreement. They do need to stay separate. It would make it technically very difficult for them to get funding, both on the nonprofit side, uh, the SCG side, and on Tramal Co. Residential. So I have kept them separate. Uh, but I've answered all other questions and concerns in both development agreements, including adding the signature of the property owners to the development agreement with, uh, Tramal Co. Residential. So I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have. Um, Attorney Haverty, Town Council has had an opportunity to review these. I know he's there this evening, so he could answer any questions the board may have as well.
I guess the only question I have is, um, on, on paragraph F, it says a select board at its 2022 meeting voted to support the proposed zoning amendment. So I, I guess I would ask, shouldn't this, shouldn't we vote on this after we vote on the town meeting warrant articles? I don't know who I'm asking.
We could do that, or we could, it's just so they don't have to stay for the whole thing. We could do the vote contingent on that approval. Would that work?
I think that would be fine.
Okay.
Good. Makes sense.
I hate to have to have them sit through all those presentations to get back to the vote again. Melissa, for the, the, um, we, we, as you heard, we had a comment during public input about the environmental, um, aspect. And I was just wondering if you or one of your team members could, um, just reiterate the summary that you gave to the planning board earlier this month on the state regulations and practices and how you'll have to follow that.
Sure. I'll defer. I know that Mark had reviewed those issues, uh, but we do have many, uh, state permits that we'll have to go through, including the MEPA process. Uh, the wastewater treatment facility will also have to be permitted through the state. Uh, and just to the board, selectmen is where we have met with, uh, some of the environmental committees in town. Um, we've agreed to go through, continue to go through the review process if this project should get to site plan review to review some of the environmental policies of our operations on site, um, including the use of electronic car stations and some of those other uses. So, uh, we have reviewed this issue and we will continue to review this issue during site plan review, should we get that far.
Well, Melissa, this is Jim Ward. Uh, Madam Chair, uh, can I jump in? This is Jim Ward, which is Melissa's co-counsel.
Yes.
As I mentioned at, uh, the planning board meeting, and Melissa just alluded to, um, as part of our MEPA process and, and in order to get our state permits, uh, there'll be an extensive, um, review by, uh, the MEPA office and, uh, the offices of, uh, I always get the name wrong, but basically Energy. Um, and they will require us to do sustainability, greenhouse gas, uh, environmental justice, uh, and it's quite robust. So, um, it, it will, it will not be missed, I guess is the easiest way to say that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, Attorney Haverty, are we, did, did the SCD Choice Organization approve their development agreement, or are we voting on it ahead of them?
That is a good question. So we have the draft agreement that came through Attorney Robbins, um, I think. Is David on tonight?
I don't see him.
David's not on, uh, but I can tell you that during our review process with Town Council, Attorney Kurt James, who is counsel for SCG, and David Haddison had reviewed those changes. Uh, the only edits that have been made since that time was just changing the 2021 dates, uh, to the 2022 dates, so there's no substantive changes whatsoever. So the, um, the form of the agreement's been approved by David and his counsel.
So I mean, I, I think that the select board can vote to sign that agreement tonight, and if they come back and don't agree to sign it themselves.
Then we start again.
Then we get to start all over. Yep.
Okay. And the other question that I had, Attorney Haverty, was, um, when the planning board voted, there was still some concern by at least one planning board member about the DHCD status and the implications of that legislation, which is down the road that we don't know about. So could you just explain, I guess, what are the unknowns or any risk factors that we take by signing this ahead of that?
Sure. Uh, and I did have some concerns with regards to the, the proposed guidelines that have been set forth by DHCD. I had the opportunity to reach out to Chris Klutchman, who was sort of the point person for DHCD on these issues. And I had really two overarching questions that I was concerned about, um, sort of interrelated. And the first question was whether entering into a development agreement with a proposed developer that, um, and prior to actually adopting a zoning district, where that development agreement has, uh, a total number of units that is fewer than the minimum number of units required under the guidelines, does that put the town at risk of having adopted a facially compliant zoning bylaw, of having the ability to count that towards housing choice compliance overturned? Um, and then the second question, again, had to do with whether including a provision in a development agreement that involves a portion of the units being age restricted, um, even though the zoning bylaw itself does not mention age restrictions one way or another, does that subject the, um, the zoning district that was passed to not being, uh, allowed to count towards housing choice? The, the initial response that I got was essentially, it's not a housing production statute. It's a zoning statute, and if the zoning is compliant, then very likely we'll be okay. However, she said she can't make that determination on her own. It has to go through a process. She asked me to, to submit a formal written question, like two written questions, to them so that they can actually address it in their frequently asked questions section on their website. And that is when we would get a response. I have no timing as to when that response would be received. Um, and, and I don't know that it would be sometime prior to the special town meeting. So there is the, that potential risk that if the town adopts a zoning bylaw that's facially appropriate, but is subject to a development agreement that has thresholds that are below the requirements for the zoning district, that at some point, when we go to DHCD to show them that we have a compliant zoning district, they're going to say, we don't think it's compliant because it doesn't meet these thresholds because of the development agreement. I, I don't, I don't want to go out on a limb. I don't think that that's likely, but I, I don't want to discount the possibility entirely either.
If that scenario played out, where does that leave us?
It leaves you with a approved zoning district that allows this high-density development, but does nothing for the town towards counting the units, towards compliance with housing choice, or counting the, the zoning district towards housing choice. I, I theoretically, um, I presume at that point, you know, the parties could agree to delete provisions from the development agreement and bring it into compliance. But other than that, you know, it, the town would run the risk of not being able to have a compliant district.
Okay.
And, and I, I can't provide you with any sort of timeframe in, in terms of when we would get a definitive answer from DHCD. I don't know that they can give us a definitive answer anyways, because these guidelines, I think, ultimately are going to look a lot different when they're ultimately implemented than they do right now. The, the, they're getting serious pushback, um, from a lot of municipalities. Um, I think that they, they've reached pretty high on the, on the thresholds that they were proposing to impose. So I, I think that what ultimately gets, uh, approved through DHCD is probably not going to be as harsh as the current version, but we'll see.
And what kind of timeline do you think they're on? Is it months? Is it years?
It's months. It, it's months. Um, the, the deadline for public comment, I think, ends in March. Um, but they've pushed off requirement, uh, compliance with the housing choice legislation in terms of, um, being applicable to, to, to get the state funding that otherwise you wouldn't be eligible for for, um, other served communities to 2023.
And so if this were approved and permitted, is there also a possibility that we would be grandfathered or? Or that the, the affordable housing would go ahead and count? Cause the legislation wasn't in place yet.
Well, the affordable housing will count. You know, that is a separate process from the housing choice process. The, the only, the only real risk that the town has here is that it would pass a very dense zoning district that is attempting to comply with these housing choice requirements. And at some point, DHCD would inform the town it doesn't comply because you've executed this development agreement that brings you below the thresholds that they had set. And I, I don't know that there's any way really to get any certainty on that question, you know, without waiting a year or two.
But you said the affordability would count, would still count.
Yes. So, so the way the affordability would work, um, any, any units that are actually created and, and constructed, um, as soon as the, the developer in the town executes a local action units regulatory agreement, they're countable on our subsidized housing inventory.
Okay. Questions? Comments? George, do you have any questions? No, okay. Do we have motions?
Do you want to do, you want to do them separately?
I think we should.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the development agreement, um, between Maple Multi Family Land SELP, a Delaware Limited Partnership, and 255 Princeton Realty Holdings, um, and with the town of Chelmsford, dated, it's gonna be dated today, Paul?
Yep.
Dated January 24th, 2022.
Contingent?
Contingent on, um, this board, uh, voting favorably to support the proposed zoning amendment for the special town meeting for February 28th, 22.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion in a second. And any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's of four in favor and one has recused himself.
Um, on the other development agreement, um, I know, um.
No, that's already been fixed.
Uh, but what about on, on paragraph D, it, it references, and I ha- I don't, I haven't looked at the, I don't know the updated one, the January 2022 special town meeting. Does that say January still, or does it say February?
It does say January.
Paragraph what?
On, on D.
So Melissa, in paragraph D, you'll have to change the month?
Yes, I can do that.
And we can just make the motion with that change in it?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the development agreement, uh, dated January 24th, 2022, um, by SCG Development Partners, um, and, um, and that's who, who else is this with? And, and the town of Chelmsford, uh, I thought it was Stratford is also included here. Is that SG, SCG?
That is SCG.
Okay. All right. So I'll make a, uh, again, I'll, I'll start over. Make a, um, motion to approve the development agreement, um, dated January 24th, 2022, by SGC Development Partners, um, of Peabody, Massachusetts, um, and the town of Chelmsford.
Contingent?
Contingent.
Again, contingent on, um, favorable, um, vote of the, for this select board on the, uh, February 2022 zoning amend, zoning bylaw amendment, uh, in the special town meeting.
In February.
In February. Did I say January?
I don't know what the checks are, so.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a very long motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So it's four in favor and one person has recused himself. Anything else, Melissa?
No, just to thank the board for all their hard work on this development agreement and, uh, also on behalf of SCG and David Haddison, uh, and Mark Baransky of Tramal Crow. We appreciate all the board's time and energy, not just at the regular meetings, but the special meetings and the work sessions. It's been a, a long process, but we're excited to be in this position. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Could we get Ken back in the room? Thank you, Joe.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mark.
Madam Chair, do you want me to stick around for the warrant article? Paul?
I gu- I guess.
Up to, up to the board. I mean, if you, if you like, we could take the article out of order. Take Article 5 and s, out of order to, yeah. Cause that's really the one I think Paul would be.
Which, oh, yeah, it said that Paul can leave?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. Articles five and six, we take out of order?
Sure.
All right. So we're moving on to Agenda Item 7, which is the special town meeting warrant articles, and we're going to take Articles 5 and 6 out of order. And do you have someone presenting?
Yeah, um, Evan Belansky, the, uh, Community Development Director. This is, Article 5 is for the UMass West Campus Multi Family Overlay District. This is an article submitted by the planning board, and it is a zoning article. And I'll ask Evan Belansky to just give an overview, uh, of the article, um, at this time. Good evening, Evan.
Hi, good evening, board members. Um, so I just wanted to provide some, um, you know, some, uh, background information, refresher, um, and kind of set the table, uh, but not go into any, 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 uh, real detail. Uh, so as the board member and many members of the community are aware, uh, the community, specifically the, uh, select board and planning board have been engaged with the proponent, uh, Tramal Crow Residential and, uh, and, uh, Chelmsford, uh, Choice, uh, over the last six months. And this has essentially created a partnership whereby, um, a public benefits package has been negotiated through the development agreement, which we've just talked about, as well as the proposed zoning overlay bylaw. I, I do want to mention, um, some of the zoning options. This came up at, uh, Finance Committee hearing, uh, last week, and I think it's worthwhile just to review. So under, uh, zoning options, it, there's a variety of options that the town, uh, has at its, um, disposal for this property, or really any property in town. First one is based upon the existing zoning. It's currently zoned, uh, single-family. Uh, that's been estimated to result in approximately 22 single-family homes. The second zoning option is, uh, what's referred to as exempt uses under the State Zoning Act. Those, those fall in a category of religious, educational, group homes, institutional, educational facilities, uh, state-run facilities, things of that nature. The third is a, is a 40B option. Uh, we've talked about this. In fact, this, this process initially began as a, a friendly 40B option. While 40B is currently not an option, uh, because as of right now, uh, the State Department of Housing and Community Development is still using last year's, uh, 40B subsidized housing inventory. subsidized housing inventory. As of January 1, 2021, which is the valid inventory, we are at 10.43%. The state's indicated that they will not be updating the 40B subsidized housing inventory until at least early 20, late 2022, early 2023. The final option is a rezoning option, and that's essentially what the process and engagement has been advancing over the last six months. So normally zoning is a typical zoning process whereby the planning board is working on creating a zoning overlay to provide an unknown opportunity. In this particular case, as the board and many members of the community are aware, it was done the exact opposite. The Trammell Crowe presented a project first, and then details and presentations of that project were discussed, reviewed, and then the zoning was created. So this is what I would refer to as a project-based rezoning, meaning that the overlay is drafted, contemplates specific characteristics of exactly what Trammell Crowe is presenting and has presented to the community. And then you layer on the development agreement, again, which is not being voted by town meeting, it's not part of the zoning bylaw. We have a very project-based project or outcome that is predictable. At a very high level, the zoning overlay is a simple majority vote at town meeting that is based upon the housing choice legislation. And Paul Haverty, Town Council, and the town moderator will likely present that from the beginning. In addition, it is a by right, simple majority vote at the planning board level. The zoning overlay proposes multifamily housing as well as an affordability requirement. And finally, the zoning overlay is primarily based upon, and it takes inspiration from the existing RM multifamily zoning district. I want to mention that specifically because that was something that the planning board wanted to use the existing zoning bylaw to the maximum extent feasible as a starting point. So when you get into the details of the zoning bylaw, you'll see that parking is based upon RM multifamily zoning. Some setbacks take inspiration from RM multifamily zoning, as well as landscaping, lot coverage, building coverage. The really, the only item that is customized for this overlay is height, specifically to accommodate two of the four-story buildings and obviously units per acre. So with that, that's really all I had prepared to state. I didn't want to get into too much detail on the granular nature of the zoning bylaw. I'm assuming that you're familiar with the specific Trammell Crowe presentation as well as the proposed zoning bylaw. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Evan. Are there any questions for Evan?
I don't have a question for Evan. I think maybe it's for Paul Haverty. It kind of goes back to the housing choice thing that we were just talking about a while ago. Now, it's because this would be housing choice that we did it as a majority vote. Is that correct?
It's a different requirement, though, so the housing choice guidelines don't get into the adoption requirements under Chapter 48. That's a different portion of the statute. They actually changed the language of Chapter 48, Section Five, as part of the housing choice legislation. So you just go by that language, and that states that "an amendment to a zoning ordinance or bylaw to allow any of the following as of right: multifamily housing or mixed-use development in an eligible location." So this has already been determined by DHCD to be an eligible location. So the simple majority provision pursuant to 48, Section Five, is applicable.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure if it wasn't counted for the housing choice, that somebody couldn't come back and say--
And that was a really good question and a question I had also asked previously and then looked at this. And we're all set on that front.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I'm not seeing any. Pat, why don't you make this motion?
Okay. I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of Article Five on the special town meeting.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Okay, four in favor and one abstention. Article Six?
Article Six is a financial article related to construction of affordable housing at 255 Princeton Street, which is the subject matter of the article you just approved regarding the UMass West Multifamily Overlay District. The funding request is a total appropriation of $1,235,000. The funding sources are $635,000 from the Affordable Housing Stabilization Fund and $600,000 from the Community Preservation Fund General Reserve for the construction of the senior housing at 255 Princeton Street. David Haddison has provided the handout in the packet, the detachment, and I invited David this evening. I thought he'd be here. I don't see him on the Zoom call at this time. But basically, the unit will be constructed by the housing authority's nonprofit affiliate, Choice, for 54 new senior supportive housing units at the West Campus. This funding of roughly $23,000 per unit, you know, would basically provide access to $11 million of federal and state funding for the construction of the project at the site. And as was noted earlier, the 54 units will be permanently affordable to seniors over the age of 62, with a mix of affordability levels ranging from 30% of the area median income to 60% of the area median income. Local preference will be provided for 70% of the units in accordance with state law. These are basically going to be one-bedroom units of between 625 to 705 square feet. And again, noting the concerns earlier, they will design to meet minimal fossil fuel and the changing needs of the senior population. The unit itself will be a separate component at the 255 Princeton Street site, and the Finance Committee voted to support this Article Six zero with one member absent at its meeting last Thursday evening.
Paul?
Yes.
You said the funds for this, the 680 coming from the stabilization--
Affordable Housing Stabilization.
555 coming from--
No, that's been corrected. The number was out there. It was noted at last Thursday night's-- Right. It was noted at last Thursday night's Finance Committee.
I had a numbers question, too, because from our December 20 discussion, I had noted that it was 640. It was ultimately a million from the trust fund because it was 640 plus the 360 that is in the development agreement. That was, that's what I had--
Again, I can't--
I went back and watched the meeting. That's why I'm just asking. So the amount from the Affordable Housing Stabilization Fund, I don't understand the 680 because what we had said was it was going to be a million and then 235 from the Community Preservation Fund.
All I can speak to is what transpired back at the Community Preservation Committee meeting in the documents that David provided to them several months ago. The number was $1,235,000, and those were in the financial documents that David provided at that time. So again, there's two different funding sources. In fact, any of the funds from the development agreement will not be, not in the Housing Stabilization Fund at this time and will not be in the Housing Stabilization Fund at this time. With the 635 that's there, the balance is roughly $637,000. Those are from previously approved and payment in lieu of projects that have previously were constructed in town. So what comes in from this project will replenish or add to the fund following this project. So there's no appropriation from Trammell Crowe or from this project into this funding source for these units. The 637 is the balance currently in the Affordable Housing Stabilization Fund prior to this project.
Okay. So this is what the CPC provided, the numbers they provided?
Yeah, and they're going to be confirming it at their meeting.
As long as they're okay with it, because it's just very different from what we went through in December. I mean, the end result is the same, but the split is very different.
Right. You know, with the town accountant that's here in the room, the balance we have in the Affordable Housing Stabilization Fund at this time is roughly $637,000.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may--
Sure. Yep.
Just to provide some clarity, I believe CPC took its initial vote prior to December to provide, at David's request, the 555.
That was back in August, Evan.
Yeah. I think there may have been some confusion or misunderstanding at the Select Board's meeting of December. Because like I said, back in August, David submitted a CPC request and the board voted it for this specific purpose.
Okay. I mean, the end result is, David's still getting is 1.235. It's just the numbers are different than what we had understood in December.
Yeah, just one final comment on that. David made it very clear that he did not want any of the development agreement funds to be treated any differently than any of the previously approved pile of money. Another way of saying that is that he did not want the development agreement to specifically state that Trammell Crowe would gift or donate money directly to Chelmsford Choice.
Yep.
He wanted it to follow the same process and procedure as other pile of money. And as the town manager mentioned, legally, that process requires town meeting to take a vote to put that money into the account and then a separate vote to take it out for appropriation.
Okay. Thank you, Evan.
You're welcome.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of Article Six.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's four abstentions. Four in favor and one abstention.
And then the next article is Paul, the parts, as we had, it's just as with his ledge road. Article One on the warrant is the ledge road easement for Estes Drive for the bus turnaround. And Paul has reviewed these documents and worked with, you know, everyone involved to bring this to the town meeting for approval. So basically, it's the town's being requested to secure the easement for roughly 11,140 square feet for the bus turnaround. And in essence, the town will be involved with the cost of paving, the patuminous surface over the roadway and maintaining it, including snow and ice removal. And again, this would allow us to improve the safety for schoolchildren who reside on ledge road. And the Finance Committee supported this Article Six to zero with one absent.
So that the easement is being donated? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of warrant Article One.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five-zero.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
Article Two is the request regarding authorizing the board to acquire a parcel that's being donated on Fourth Avenue. This is a .04 acre parcel that has joined an existing piece of town-owned land. I want to ask John Souza, John was before you months ago, regarding this parcel.
Thank you, Mr. Manja. Madam Chair, members of the board, this may look very familiar with you. Back at the October 25 Select Board meeting, I brought this matter before you, and the board voted five to zero to support this. As you recall, at that time, this is a two-step process. So the board voted affirmatively for this, and now the next step is to go to town meeting. As the town manager said, it's a small parcel. It's about 1,620 square feet, located on Fourth Ave, has an assessed value of just over $4,000, and it's directly about another town-owned parcel of land of the same size.
Any questions? Okay.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval for warrant Article Two.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five-zero.
Thank you.
Article Three is a funding to appropriate funds and ratification of a collective bargaining agreement between the town and the Public Safety Dispatches Union. At your last meeting, in open session at the end of that meeting, you voted to approve this agreement. It's a three-year collective bargaining agreement. The funding request is $82,050. The period of the agreement runs from July 1, 2019, through June 30 of 2022, roughly five months from now. Basically, the agreement provides adjustments to the pay scale of 0% the first year, 4% the second year, and 2% the final year. In addition to that, there's a one-time payment of $1,500 for those dispatchers employed on or after July 1, 2020. The Finance Committee voted six-zero with one absent to support this article.
Any other questions? Just reviewed this at our last meeting.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of warrant Article Three.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five-zero.
Thank you.
And then the final article is Article Four, and this is for appropriation, authorization of borrowing for the Forum Ice Rink Refrigeration System. It's an appropriation request for $1,538,000. The town treasurer would be authorized to borrow with your approval to fund the replacement of the Forum Ice Rink. Gary Persicetti is on the call this evening. Ask Gary to just give you a quick overview of the problem there and where we're at with that. Good evening, Gary.
Good evening. Good evening, Tom. I believe I was in front of you once to just bring you up to speed that we did take a electrical hit. We lost one phase of the power. And what that caused is it caused our communications to get on. We also had trouble with one of the two chillers. So we did find a gentleman that originally did the work in 1985. He was able to come with some remarkable pieces. If you move up to a set of pictures on a slide, you'll see the gentleman's there working on it in the middle. You see he's got his computer with his RS232, and to the right of him in the lower end of the form is the actual panel. He actually even had the main board, which is the white one, with the display in the middle at the bottom center of that. He was able to get us up and running, which diverted us from spending $40,000 a month from now until the end of the ice season and $1,000 a day for fuel. So with that being said, we hooked up with our insurance company, and we do have a little bit of funds coming back after we submit all the paperwork. We rebuilt a chiller, the work that was done by this gentleman, and another company, FMC, to help out at the time, and some labor that was put into this by myself and some of our staff. We did come up with an agreement with the insurance carrier, Maya, that we would not reinvest this money in the existing plant, but that we would use it towards the new one. And we're in agreement with that, knowing that we want to do all this work over the off-season and summer. We're looking at a complete plant package and install, which basically, number one, is going to take us from gas to electric, which is one of the things Badri was speaking about earlier, how we are trying to meet the new emissions. So it will be electric-fired chiller. That brings a whole other point into this, the fact that the building is only 208 for power, has to be 480. So we have to have the 13-8 service from across the street brought in by National Grid. We have to put a transformer, drop it down to the 480. And then once we pass the chiller plant, we have to put another step-down transfer to bring the rest of the building down to 208, seeing that the rest of the building runs on 208, and you don't want to try to bring that up, of course, to the 480. So this is a full, all-inclusive. So all the controls will be new. The chillas will be new. The, a little bit of supplemental heat that will go with that will be in there. The other thing that will be really great is the plant will more image, not the same program, but how we run the schools and the town buildings on-- same program, but how we run the schools and the town buildings off EMS, a building management system. So we'll be able to do the same for this one. We'll be able to monitor this from computers and make sure that everything's doing what it's supposed to do. I'll take any questions if anyone has any. Thank you.
Questions? Well, it's a nit, but I think the number is 1.530 because Melissa Joyce's email said she already had 8 million in there. It should have been, I mean, 8,000, it should have been 80, so that's 72 additional. And her email said 1.530. You added 80 to the 1.438, 1.458. I think it should be adding 72 to that. You just might want to check it.
Okay, I'll double-check that.
You know what I'm saying?
I thought I had checked it, but I'll check it again.
Because Jim Clancy said the same thing, but I think he got talked over. He was adding the 72 in. Okay.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of warrant Article four.
Second the motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero.
Thank you, members of the board.
Yep. Okay, that brings us to report some presentations, Paul.
Yeah, the first one is we have Joe Tierney here from the Vinyl Square Transportation Improvements Concept Plan, coming up to the podium along with other members of the Vinyl Square Strategic Action Plan Committee.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Select Board, Paul, everybody here tonight. My name is Joe Tierney, 3 Grant Street, and I'm here to represent Vinyl Square Strategic Action Plan Committee. Bill Gillette and Brian Creamer are here. Other people are either remote or trying to make this meeting because we fully support the next steps and appreciate your support. So tonight, the major thing is to approach the next steps, to basically approach the board with what we need from you at this point. If anybody here at home has not been aware of what we've been doing to improve Vinyl Square, sorry I didn't have the chance to corral you and have you take the survey, but if you can move to the next slide, Virginia, please. A recap of what went on in 2021. Basically, we had a great win and got funded, the help with district local technical assistance. And the assistance of NEMCOG basically helped us with a survey to deliver to the town and actually share the results and deliver the plan. Now, the three major components of what we did with NEMCOG was to conduct that robust public engagement. We had a great participation with that survey. And I want to just take this opportunity to thank everyone again for their participation because it went very well. And we also had a good turnout for these events to engage with the community. What I did on the slide here, anybody watching at home or looking at the recording, we had the, the survey ran from May and June, but then the next steps were we actually delivered the results of the survey. And if you wanted to see what that was and the recap of what the survey went through with all your feedback, they compiled it on July 15th. And that QR code, if you scan it, it will actually take you to that meeting on Chelmsford Telemedia's website, but that will go right to YouTube so you could see the whole thing. Same with the next step, we came with the presentation of the actual concept plan that really went through what the, what NEMCOG put together in a nice overview, what it would look like. And I have a couple of other things to show you on the slides. But then, basically, then NEMCOG also followed up with next steps, what really needs to take place to make sure that this thing gets, you know, executed through DPW and Mass DOT. And that's why we're here tonight, to seek approval and your support, continued support as you've already shown us through the past year. Okay, next slide, please. This just basically gives you an overview of the hotspots and the major items that were brought up as, you know, priorities that were brought up by multiple people and it just basically hones in on that. And the next slide is a nice little visual of the aerial view of things that you'd see that would change to improve traffic and the walkability and traffic lights, safety, et cetera. And that's what the aerial view would look like once this is all said and done. And one last picture I want to show you, this was done by Brian Creamer here. He's very talented. And this is exactly what it would look like coming into the square from Middlesex. And it's really a vision and it's very exciting to picture what happens down the road. And you'll notice on the, on the sides there, those are the wave-finding signs that we also will need to continue to have the DPW's support with our subcommittee to pick the final spots for the wave-finding signs. Okay, the, next slide, please. Okay, so here we are with the next steps actually are. We need the Select Board to actually review the plans. And I actually submitted in a packet, so you have that with you. It's actually the, the concept plan overview and the next steps that is outlined by NEMCOG on exactly what needs to take place to make sure that this gets done. And to identify town staff, obviously, with the DPW and Gary, I'm sure you're still on the call. I know he's been informed and Paul notified him and also Joe Erickson about, about also putting together what would be, what are town costs that is, that we're responsible for, for this project. It's roughly about 25% of the costs is a survey that's needed, correct, Paul?
No, it's a design plan.
The design plan, yes.
What they refer to as a 25% design plan.
Yes. And they say it's about two to four years out. So that's why we were here, to make sure the momentum is maintained, because we're ready to work with you on the other side. And that will be in the next slide. But other funding programs that are involved with this to help make sure that this is taken care of, our transportation improvement program is known as the TIP funding process, Complete Streets Funding Program, and the Shared Streets Spaces and Funding Program. So there's, there's ways that we actually will have this paid for. And there's also things that we can do, short-term, medium, and long-term. And that's basically what we need to make sure is the people that we're handing this off to at DPW is, is keeping the momentum going, like I had said. And if you move to the next slide, I have the ask for tonight and where we're going to continue to also be engaged with the group, taking it from here. Again, like I said, we, we want to make sure that you continue to support us and approve this. Because this also was part of our original master plan program that was laid out. And again, we've had open sessions and again, it's a way that the, the town contingency has spoken that they want to see these improvements. And have, obviously, the DPW, Gary, and anybody else work with them, make sure it's still, you know, a hard item, along with everything else in town. And from here, we also identify some things on slides that NEMCOG say we could really do in the shorter term, is like Newfield is signage that can be improved, that is something that we can deal with. We don't even need Mass DOT. And there's other things that we can do with the Complete Streets in the Shared Streets program. One last thing I want to mention is, obviously, you know, Vinyl Square Committee is still intact. We deal with multiple things in the, in the area of North. But we also are going to have a subcommittee with Bill, Brian, Mike Walsh, myself. We also want to appeal to the businesses in Vinyl Square and other residents. We are going to be reaching out to have other people on a steering committee to work with DPW in cases, any other things that we need for feedback or, or engagement because of the other things that are involved with the packet that they require or recommend for next steps, obviously. And from there, I say thank you again. I appreciate everybody's participation in this project. We're very proud of it. And we want to make sure we keep the ball rolling. And lastly, our next Vinyl Square meeting is actually at February 10th at 7:00 PM. So whoever at the DPW is charged with this project, if it's Gary and/or Joe Erickson, we really appreciate it if you can join us in that meeting. We'll start, you know, engaging with conversations on what we can do together to keep this ball rolling.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions?
Paul, what is the, what is the town's financial obligation and the implementation?
The issue here is we have to design the project, what's called, as was mentioned earlier, the 25% design plan. We are working on getting an estimate from a private engineering firm of which, you know, what it would cost to perform that work. And as was noted, it's going to take some time. You know, you start with the survey plan and then all the overlay on top of it. And then the idea is, once that is planned, is drafted, it gets sent, approved by the committee, approved by the board, and then we send it to MassDOT for their approval. And then, once they approve the conceptual design, then we then seek the TIP funding, as was mentioned earlier, from the Transportation Improvement Plan to actually construct the project, which is noted early as a multi-year process. So you're talking well into the six figures to do that design work. What we're trying to do now is find out what that would entail and then how to obtain the funding to do that work, design work, because it's significant. Basically, even though it's called 25% design plan, it's really more than 25% design. It's basically, it's, it's a design process that basically lays out the work that would, that would take place in terms of engineering, you know, survey work, construction costs, everything. And then what the state does, and we've seen this when they've done the project down the street here and on Berwicker and Riveneck Road, as well as the one on Conca Dev, MassDOT would hold a public hearing to get input on the design plan from the public. And then, once you then move past that approval, then you go to, for the funding for the project. So we'll be back with you, hopefully, within a month with the, you know, cost estimate. And then, again, we'll seek a funding source for that design work and then move forward with the, with the project. So do you need a vote tonight? I think with the, I think what, tonight's first step would be to request that the town manager and, you know, to proceed with the cost estimate and engineering services to perform the, to advance the project. So basically, it would be a formal direction to move forward. So that way, and then I'll come back to you at a, at a meeting in February with the actual work. And then, and then we'll engage an engineer and then, as you said, start the process. So I think the initial step would be, you know, would be a vote of the board directing the manager to proceed with this project.
So, I mean, if you want a formal motion, I'd make a motion to approve the concept development plan that was put forward by the Vinyl Square Action Plan Committee and have the town manager start investigating the next, to afford with the next steps.
I'll second the motion.
You have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? I just want to say I've been in a lot of the committee meetings and you guys have just done a terrific job with NEMCOG. There's been a lot of, lot of effort that's gone into this, so.
Thank you. I appreciate all the support we've had from you folks.
I know that's all volunteer hours, but they've really done a lot.
Again, I appreciate your help as well and the support of the whole community, actually. Thank you very much.
It's obvious in your renderings and drawings. It came out really nice.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye, five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take care.
Next is the monthly traffic safety committee report. Chief Spiny is on the call this evening, and Gary Persicetti and Gary Ryan, who are also committee members, are on the call as well. We'll just sort of just have Chief Spiny walk you through it and then we'll, we'll address the concern that was raised earlier about how, you know, regarding Lennav. So, good evening, Chief. Thanks for joining us this evening.
Good evening. Jim Spiny, Police Chief. Good evening, members of the board. I'll go through the, the one-page traffic committee update if you're ready. Okay. First, we'll go over current actions for currently obtaining engineering design proposals for the crosswalk at Mill Road and Raymond Road. We'll be looking to apply for a shared streets and spaces grant program for this project. As the board is, is aware, there was a crosswalk request for that area, Mill Road and Raymond. Because it does sit basically at a double-blind corner, that project, if we were to move forward on that, would require extensive additional warning lighting, really on both sides, in our opinion. We went out there and checked it out. It would need, you know, safety lighting on either side of the crosswalk. So there is a, we are looking at having that design looked at and proposals given to the town to reassess whether we move in that direction. Requesting the Select Board approval to make Lennav a one-way street from Main Street to Groton Road during the hours of seven to nine. I did hear, I did hear Mrs. Olson's concerns. That, Lennav was brought to our attention as a result of a North Chelmsford listening session with regards to traffic concerns. We went out there and took a look at that. We spoke to almost every resident on the street. The concern is, was and is that even though there is a truck exclusion on that street currently, the morning hours do continue to see some truck traffic along with commuter traffic cutting through. The committee felt, I thought, you know, because most of the complaints were morning hours, instead of excluding traffic permanently one way, we were suggesting giving it a try of the 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM hours, consistent with Sherman and Newfield Street, as you travel down Groton Road a little further. The idea being, keep the traffic on the main thoroughfare as much as possible. I believe it would be a minimal impact, having vehicles take a right on Main Street from Groton Road. The residents, obviously, are in favor of this, of that area. Again, we were, we were presented with a lot of quality of life issues at that listening session. And unfortunately, there was a lot of them. We couldn't do what we'd like to do. This particular one, I think we can make an impact with this two-hour restriction to affect the quality of life on Lennav. So that's why the committee is making that proposal to the board. I'll certainly circle back on this if the board would like, and I'll move on to the next one. Replacing existing stop sign at the end of Turnpike at Mill. We have had a number of accidents when you come down Turnpike to the intersection of Mill Road. There's a stone wall there that has been struck several times. So the proposal is to replace the current stop sign with an illuminated one, similar to Graniteville Road at School Street. And hopefully, that will be far more effective of grabbing the attention of, you know, the motoring public to advise them that, in fact, the road is coming to an end, especially when road conditions are slippery, somebody unfamiliar with the area, et cetera. And reviewing potential commercial truck route possibilities. The Traffic Committee will be moving forward with, you know, I know that Mr. Persicetti is putting together some, some mapping programs for us to take a look at with possible truck exclusion ideas in the future. Under pending actions, Massachusetts Department of Transportation Local Bottleneck Reduction Competitive Grant Program is in progress to fund innovative solutions to address local congestion bottleneck. So we have submitted Golden Cove and the Berwicker Intersections for consideration under this grant. Ledge Road School Bus Turnaround, obviously, that's, that's a waiting town meeting. There'll be a proposal at town meeting. And as far as completed actions, lighted speed signs installed on Dunstable Road at Cormier and Stonehill. So I, we took a ride out there and we picked some locations that we thought would be most effective at vehicle speed. And I think they're going to work out well. They flash similar to the stop signs on Graniteville Road. And that's the report.
Comments? Chief, getting back to Lynn Avenue, do you have any idea how many vehicles you're talking about total that would be impacted, that would have to go all the way around?
I don't have the study in front of me now, but I know that there was, just one way of travel was over 100 vehicles. So we could probably easily double that. I don't have the times in front of me. I can only tell you that after speaking with the residents of the street, they said that the morning hours seemed to be the most impactful for them, living there. So the thought was, making it one-way from Groton Road to Main Street would be easier for vehicles to take a right on the Main Street than, obviously, having them continue up Main Street and take a left on the Groton Road. That would be more dangerous. So that's why we came up with Groton to Main as a restriction.
Okay. And there was a comment about buses, and I'm not sure if the speaker meant buses use Lynn Avenue. Are buses allowed to use Lynn Avenue? And do they use it?
I know that we reached out to LRTA. They did not, they were using Lynn Ave. And they have no problem with the, with the, that becoming a one-way for two hours. I don't have information in front of me on school buses right now. If the board would like, I could explore that further.
I think the concern was school bus stops down near the Triangle Variety.
Right. I know she did say that, but I just, I wondered if they did use this road. Okay. All right. Thank you.
So, go ahead, George.
If I may, I did get some calls on this opposing, holding this up, or asking for maybe to take a second look, because some of the traffic that would be going down to the triangle, besides the three buses, I think there are four buses, because you have the vocational buses and you have the district buses. And also, making the loop around from Groton Road to Main Street. They just asked if we could maybe hold off a little bit and review it a little, maybe take another look at it, Jimmy. I'm just, I'm just the messenger here. But I did get, I haven't got a lot of calls this week for a couple of reasons, but I did get some calls on that today. So I just thought I'd bring it out.
Well, what I could suggest to the board, if you'd like, I could, I could get some eyes directly on that bus stop at those timeframes. And I could see, get a firsthand eyeball on exactly what the impact would be with the bus stop. I don't have, I have no information in front of me with regards to the bus stop, so I could certainly look into that further.
Yeah.
I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I'd like to see that, too.
I know this was, this was brought up at the traffic listening sessions. And I have to say, thank you for all the work that you've done on it, because I know that you guys reached out individually to every single person that lives on Lynn Ave. I think in hindsight, what I'm seeing is people who live less than a mile down the road are now concerned about that and the kind of the toothpaste effect and the impact that that's going to have on them. So I appreciate your suggestion, Chief Spinney, to look into that a little bit more. My only other thought, Paul, is if we're going to be doing a little more work here, is that maybe we just notify those people in the less-than-a-mile area between Main Street and the Triangle Store, and Groton Road and the Triangle Store, and just see if they have any input, because this may affect them. I think we were just so focused on solving Lynn Ave that, Ken, were you going to say something?
Chief, I was just going to mention, I hear what you're saying about the bus stops and having people watch the bus stops. But I think the other concern is if someone's, I think, coming down Groton has to take that right in a bus. Can they, can they make that swing?
Oh.
Am I looking at it from the right?
I think they, I think they can, Ken. But you know what? Like I said, I don't, I know we reached out to LRTA. They said they have no problem in making that maneuver. So I think those buses are comparable. But I'm more concerned now with the school bus stop concern. If there's kids right there in that parking lot, I wouldn't want to increase the impact to that area. So, you know, I agree that we'll take an extra look at that effect.
Okay.
I have a representative on the LRTA, Jimmy. I don't know who you spoke to. Maybe Mr. Bradley, David Bradley, maybe? Did you?
I had one of my, I had one of my lieutenants reach out, but it wasn't me directly.
Okay. I think they make a left-hand turn and they have more than a right-hand turn, if that matters to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else on this one, Paul?
No, that's it. Thank you. Oh, and we'll mention, since we're on traffic, it was mentioned earlier, in, our next meeting in five weeks from now, on the 28th of February, what will happen that evening is we're scheduled to come in, and so maybe we'll put it as public service announcements at the next meetings, we're scheduled to come in to have this, the discussion regarding the sidewalks and road paving plan for the upcoming year. And, you know, based upon our road pavement assessment and inventory. So, and I think, I think also perhaps that same evening, we'll have the issue of the truck, commercial truck exclusion route. So, it's, it'll be, you know, that'll be a very important meeting. As I said, we'll, we'll probably put it at the, under public service announcements for.
What date is it?
February 28th. So just over, basically, five weeks from tonight is our scheduled target date for having those two traffic considerations. So again, road paving sidewalks plan, as well as the truck exclusion route. So I just wanted to bring the board and the community aware of that. And they said, we'll get the word out, you know, because I know there'll be a lot of input that evening.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
So we're at the ARPA funding now?
Yes.
I'm gonna.
Go ahead.
The data's going to go black for a minute. We're just going to connect to John's. Go ahead and introduce it, Paul.
On the, next on the agenda is the discussion, continued discussion of funding requests under the American Rescue Plan Act. What, John has updated the spreadsheet. It notes the actions that have been taken and approved by the board to date. And then, John, Darlene Lucier and I, we met, you know, met and reviewed the remaining requests that are there at the time. And we then put those into the packet. I will say that items came in late that we weren't able to consider and aren't in this recommendation. That had to do with the, the updated request for the senior transportation services, as well as the one for the firefighters' cancer screening. So we, that, we did not have a chance to consider those items for the board this evening. I will remind the board and the community that this has been an evolution process. Since we started this process, and it basically, within the last month, the federal government issued its final rules and regulations regarding the American Rescue Plan Act expenditures. They basically provide a $10 million loss revenue exemption to communities, meaning that you could spend up to $10 million of ARPA money, which in our case, we received 10.6 million, on any general municipal service provided by a community. And so, that sort of changed a bit of the dynamic in terms of, basically, with the exclusion of funding pension obligations and so forth, it can be used for any general municipal purpose. So when John and Darlene and I got back together, we sort of looked at that. I will also remind the board and the community that the town has until December 31st, 2024, to commit the funds. And then you have until December 31st, 2026, to actually expend the monies for the project. So there is time available to consider the requests as they move along. And towards that end, and the recommendations that the Finance Director, Town Accountant, and I brought this evening, we left 2.75, roughly, of funding, you know, of the 10.57 of funding unallocated, recognizing that there are things that will come in that we don't foresee at this time, and that may arise over time. And those continue to evolve. And as I said, you're seeing some come in at the last meeting. There are some that may come in the next week. For example, we're scheduled to receive in the next week the appraisal report for the municipal parking lot in the center. And again, that's been an ongoing concern of the community in terms of securing permanently the parking in the center. There's just those type of items that can, you know, that continually to come across. But again, we don't have a number at this point in time. You know, there's those type of issues that arise in the future, as well as the ongoing ARPA funding situation in terms of the ongoing costs for Richardson Road cleanup. We did put in a number tonight, which was sort of for the first phase of the examination of the town sewer system in conformance with the consent order. But that, again, would only be the investigation. It wouldn't be the construction that may come out of that. So I guess my point is, is that this is an ongoing process with variables that change. And that was why we thought it best to keep some funds unallocated. So with that as intro, I guess where we could pick up is, is where we left off.
May the Chumsid Water District have a chance to just give a few minutes' input in regards to this?
It wasn't on the agenda. I guess it's.
It's one of the items.
Yeah, sure. We had others speak of public input.
Thank you. I wasn't sure to come.
Will you just remember your name, please, and?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
We need your name and address for the record.
Yes. John Harrington, 49 Boston Road. I'm a Chumsid Water Commissioner, and I'm here representing the Chumsid Water District, as well as my two colleagues, two of my fellow commissioners.
John, can you let go of the mic, because it's making a rattle noise as your hand moves?
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
Sure. So, with that being said, a couple of questions we have is from my colleagues and the district itself. We represent about 8,000 water takers. We're the largest district in this town. With that being said, some of our concerns are, how do you pick who gets what and so forth? That's one concern we have. Another concern, as you know, I've been to the meetings, certainly my superintendent, Andy Reed, has been at the meetings. And we kind of feel that the louder somebody complains or makes an issue on items, they either get funded or they're pushed in to defer it. When we came before the board, we asked for a two million, a couple million dollars to do infrastructure and so forth. But after hearing some of the meetings and the comments, we wound it back to 700,000. We felt that was a good figure, as far as knowing other people need or want to have some of that money. And we're no different. However, we become very disappointed. We see we're not recommended. We thought for sure, being the largest water district that could use this funding, and where we cut it back tremendously, that at least we could have been put on deferred to get another shot at it, and maybe to figure out, are we doing something wrong with filing with our information? It was very disappointing. And so, the final question, and I said earlier, how do you figure who gets what? Is it the squeaking wheels that get it? And I've been at these meetings, you know who I mean. So that's our question. We're kind of disappointed. We know it's hard for this board to go through this. But as we sit here, we're saying, wow. That's all I have to say, Andy. Do you have anything? That's our comment.
We're about to go through what was put in those columns and why, so.
So you're going to go through it and discuss why and why not somebody should get funding?
I think that's the process that we started, yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Paul, go ahead. What were you?
Sure.
So were you just suggesting that we?
Sure.
Look at how things landed in the different columns now?
Sure. Yeah, we can start where we left off. If you go up, John, to the number 26, I think is where we left off.
So could you just bring folks up to date on the?
Previously approved.
HVAC for the three buildings and the, because that's new information from our last board meeting.
Sure, sure. Okay. The, sure. If you want to just slide up a little bit there. Yeah, at the last meeting, the board, again, recognizing the funding limitations for historic buildings of the town, for HVAC ventilation improvements, asked us to explore funding opportunities from the Community Preservation Fund. Last Wednesday evening, we appeared before the Community Preservation Committee, and they are recommending approval of four articles at the spring annual town meeting. The first was the McKay Library HVAC System Upgrades, which would allow that building to be reopened to the public by enhancing the ventilation system to provide air exchange and ventilation to allow the building to reopen the main floor of that building. It's not an exhaustive ventilation system that would allow the upper level, but it would allow the main level of the building. And that's when you heard the library trustees speak about the fact that they could do some of the programs that are generally done upstairs or in a larger space, perhaps at the North Town Hall or at the Senior Center or other venues. So that $150,000 request is recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, and it appears on the first draft of the spring annual town meeting warrant that you have, that we'll go over shortly this evening. The second one was similarly, the other HVAC building that qualified was the Center Town Hall, $144,450 in ventilation improvements. Again, you've got an historic building that's well over 150 years old, that was not constructed with the ventilation requirements of today. You know, whether, and it's not just COVID, because hopefully COVID will become an endemic and so forth, but just in terms of healthy air exchange in those facilities, it's an enhancement. The Community Preservation Committee, again, reviewed that request and approved it eight to zero to go towards town meeting. And then similarly, the North Town Hall ventilation system for $74,900. And then lastly, there was a $200,000 request that's been also recommended for the Varney Playground enhancements. Basically, the reconstruction of the Varney Playground needs additional funds for drainage and for these additional costs that have arisen in terms of supply chain and so forth, to have that work done. So in essence, you know, we were, well over, approximately $700,000 of requests that have been funded, and as you can see, were moved to the Community Preservation Fund, which, again, will go to town meeting and, at the spring, spring town meeting in April.
So is the thought that the $200,000 earmark, is, one of the candidates would be the Varney Ball Field?
No.
Because I know that.
No, this is for, this is for the playground itself.
I understand this is for the playground.
Right. The additional $200,000 that was the earmark in the budget will come before the board for what you to decide.
Okay.
My expectation is, is that it would be for the baseball field and playing field. But you need to formally have that. We can put that on a future agenda for your, for your directive. I have been contacted by Representative Golden's office in terms of that the, they're now in the process of making those funds available, since the act has been approved by the legislature and signed by the governor. I can put that on for next Monday night's discussion. So that sort of, that sort of completed the HVAC systems. And as we noted earlier, again, all the others were buildings that didn't qualify for, for community preservation, such as school buildings and police station and so forth. So, so that was a good start. And then, we, then moving down to the list, the next items were the Senior Center Respite Care Program, Social Day Program, and Nutrition Program. And you can see, we deferred those because there is, appears to be adequate funding in those revolving funds. Those are ongoing programs of the community that are paid for through revolving funds, meaning those who utilize those services, you know, pay funds which are, which are approved every year at town meeting to maintain a revolving fund. Having looked at the balance of those funds, we're not denying anybody any services. And so therefore, we recommend that you defer it. And hopefully, funding is never a reality for that at this point in time. The next item is the supplemental transportation service for age-friendly, the $100,000 that was revised on the 19th. Again, that came in the day the packets were going out. And we, we did not even have a chance to fully understand the process. And I believe there are people on the call this evening. I think Jen Malanson's there, I see on the Zoom call, and she may have additional information. But we, we, meaning myself, the Finance Director and Town Accountant, we just didn't have information of which to make a decision on that project at all.
And I think they were also going to come back with how they were going to. And I think they were also going to come back with how they were going to get the funding lined up for year two.
Exactly. And I don't know if Jen's on the call there.
Could I just ask a question on 26, 27, and 28? If they're doing okay with the revolving funds, do we expect that to turn at some point? Or should we just put it in the not recommended because they're doing okay sustaining themselves right now?
Yeah, you can put it in the not recommended. We, you know, we, to us, we really didn't have a, we didn't really have a distinction. We really don't have a fine line between deferred versus not recommended. I mean, honestly.
Well, I mean, except that deferred adds up to more than we have left anyway.
Right.
So I'm just trying to.
But I would say at this point, we, you know, we have, throughout the years, have, when there's been a need such as the, you know, Senior Meals on Wheels Program and other issues, when there have been needs, we've, the town has stepped up and put funding through the operating budget for those needs. So I don't see it happening.
We would revisit it if that happens, right?
Exactly.
But right now, we don't see a need for it.
Right. So we can move it to not recommended. That's fine.
If you guys disagree with me speaking up.
No.
Yeah, just a note in there.
Yeah.
So the revolving fund.
Yeah, that's fine.
Typically funded that way.
Okay, that's fine.
So the 100K, we don't, did you want?
The 70K is, yeah, the 100K.
No, I'm moving on to my 29.
29, Jen Malanson's on the call. She can explain the revised request.
I see John Bowles here, too.
Yeah. I see John Bowles, too. Yes, I'm sorry.
Jen or John, one of you can unmute.
Yeah, sure. I wasn't sure if you were ready to hear from us. So essentially, we went back and sort of reworked the scope of the program. Initially, we were really looking to, you know, in a snapshot, provide additional service above and beyond what the Senior Center provides that would, that all residents would be eligible for regardless of age from Monday through Friday, from, I think it was 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., which would require the hiring of two part-time dispatchers. So in an effort to reduce our ask, you know, being mindful of the fact that there are limited funds available and also the expansion of what the funds can be used for, we kind of went back to the drawing board and we decided to start smaller, which is not a bad thing, and to look at simply expanding the hours that the Senior Center runs. So they presently run their transportation service until 2:00 p.m., so then we would take over at 2:00 p.m. and go to 6:00 p.m. in the evening. So it would be four hours a day, five days a week. That would reduce the need for two part-time dispatchers down to just one part-time dispatcher. It still would be open to residents of all ages, which I'm very happy to provide you with reasons if you want as to why that really is necessary and also why, in many ways, it's COVID-related, although I understand that, you know, this funding does not necessarily have to be used for COVID-related projects only. So that's sort of what we did. So the, I think that the only thing that's a little bit confusing is that, so the one year operating cost would not be 100,000. It actually would be less than that. We're asking for a little bit more than a one-year operating cost just to be able to carry some money over into the second year, because as we talked about before, we would be going after grant funding and other sources to be able to fund moving forward for this project. So we were hoping that we could maybe provide ourselves with a small cushion moving into the second year. And if there are, if there are questions, specific questions about that, I'll refer you to John, who's really put a lot of work into kind of developing a budget, a sort of a working budget to the best of our ability at this time. So happy to take questions from the board.
Anyone have questions for us?
I just have a quick question.
Could you come to the mic, darling?
I'm a little bit just nervous about what are, what is the town's liability? We're kind of running the, like, this is kind of like an Uber, like, it's like opened up to not just seniors. I mean, so an 18-year-old could call, and so we're kind of opening ourselves up a little bit more than just taking people to doctor's appointments. I don't know where else we're going, maybe to a mall or to where we're dropping these people up. Just don't know what the liability now is for the town if something happens, car accident, but what, how, just a little bit.
The town's insurance coverage provides coverage for volunteers and in their personal vehicles for, you know, for incidents such as this. So for example, if somebody was delivering Meals on Wheels for the elderly or was driving somebody to grocery shopping and so forth as a volunteer, the town does have coverage under our liability policies.
Okay. I just went down and just thought about that. Just wasn't sure.
We also would not be looking for folks to use personal vehicles. We would be utilizing repurposed town vehicles that had been phased out of their current duties.
Yeah, the other thing is, I think the primary focus, at least for year one, will be residents that do not drive, but we're going to be focusing on medical appointments first and probably grocery shopping second. So we expect the majority of the people are going to be probably at least out of school, out of, you know, out of school and probably college as well. And they're going to be residents that are living in the town. And I know that Jen serves a pretty large community that do not drive now. She hasn't necessarily enumerated those, but they're quite a few.
And then we would do Cory checks on the drivers and so forth, volunteer drivers.
Yes.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
This is John Souza. Just have a question. I may have missed it in the presentation, but are there any income restrictions on this? I mean, you know, I'm not against someone that getting a service that, you know, is at the poverty level or is, needs financial assistance, but I just, I'm just not sure that we want to get into the ride business for someone that can afford it.
Well, the thing is that everyone we're targeting for this will be people that are not able to drive anymore. And I think there are a fair number of senior residents in this area. The way I've backed into numbers and I've worked with different agencies in town to try to do that, and I think there are at least 500 residents in that category, and I did not actually consider anyone under the age of 60 initially. And Jenna's got a better handle on those residents as well. So the thing is, we have looked critically at the potential donations that we can have, and we feel that we can raise perhaps 30, you know, 20 to 40,000. We can probably raise some this year, but next year, I think probably up to 30 or 40, 000 dollars through donations. The other big lever that we have is the cost of the service itself. Right now, you can, the service costs actually almost less than driving your own car downtown and back and forth. So consequently, since we're using town cars, we've reduced the expenses instead of having to pay mileage for volunteers that might have it 56 cents a mile. So consequently, we feel that as the service grows, we can make adjustments in a variety of ways that we can have essentially a self-pay-as-you-go kind of a program so that we won't be relying on town funds in future years, perhaps a small amount. But I think our goal is to try to be completely funded through the program itself.
And I'll just add to that, just to sort of more, maybe more directly answer your question, John Souza, about income requirements. We haven't considered the option of having income requirements. Although we are working very, very closely with the Chelmsford Housing Authority on this project, Connie Donahue has been a major contributor to us all along the way in working this through and logistically, because part of the reason for expanding beyond seniors is that there are quite a lot of Chelmsford residents that are in lower-income subsidized housing that are not senior age, that have transportation issues, that really need help with getting around and accessing transportation. And, you know, I know that, remember Dixon brought up a couple of weeks ago when we spoke about, you know, the LRTA, which is certainly a very well-run system, but I don't know if any of you have ever tried to use the LRTA. It can take four hours or more to get to where you needed back using the LRTA. So some, you know, not really the best option for people, particularly folks who have maybe children that they either have to bring with them or leave at home with a sitter or something like that. So, but certainly not beyond considering, you know, showing some proof of income eligibility, something like, you know, a Mass Health Card or a SNAP benefit card or something like that. Could be easy enough.
How long does the program run? At what point is it, when it's one month in or four months in, do you know that there's a demand validated for it?
That's a good question. I don't know that I could give a hard answer to that right now, Madam Chairwoman. You know, certainly with the new program, and I almost would consider this to be more of a pilot program because we've scaled back the service hours considerably. You know, my approach to this is very much like my garden program, I think, in starting small and evaluating the process as you go on, and you figure out what's working for the program, what's not working, and you make adjustments, you know, in that way. And so, you know, I'm not trying to dance around your question. I just, I just don't think it's something that I can accurately answer. I don't want to answer falsely.
I think I can add, Madam Chairman. I've thought about it considerably. One of the things we're not doing right now is really promoting the fact that the service is available. We're using the Senior Center Newsletter. That's pretty much all that's being done is public promotion. So members of the Chelmsford Senior Center that have signed up for the newsletter, there are approximately 1,000 people, more or less, that are on that newsletter. They're the only ones that are actually getting information about it. The Chelmsford Housing Authority, we know that there's probably 100 to, or a little bit more, that are currently do not drive, that are resident there. Many of those that answered the survey a year or so ago mentioned that they weren't using the Senior Center at all. In other words, they weren't going to and from the Senior Center, and they were relying on friends and sometimes family members to get around. And so these are the folks that we're really, I'm really concerned about. And also, I know there's a whole bunch of caregivers, you know, parents in their 40s and 50s, maybe 60s, and they're caring for their elderly parents that can't drive anymore. And those folks, we haven't actually reached out to. Jen and I both have done some social media work in some, for the Chelmsford Grow Row and other programs, and we've been able to advertise to, you know, several thousand people, free of charge, of course, and actually reach people and get other people involved. And I think that if we have a strong and very systematic marketing program, and obviously we want to turn it on very carefully so that we don't outstrip our demand and have more rides requested than our, that our cars available, I think that that way we can manage this thing. And I really do think there's going to be, if the services are available and if it is reliable, meaning that we've got, you know, a number of people that can take residence for their doctor's appointments and so on, I think it'll become usable.
Okay. So Paul, given the hour, you said this just came in. Do you, do you need, we had talked about, like, can we just put something down on paper that says, here's how we're going to sustain it past the initial increment or an educated guess? Do you guys need more time to look at what's behind this and come back with that?
Well, they, they.
Do you have a basis?
I mean, in their correspondence, they basically felt that within a year and a half, they would be self-supporting, right? I mean, that's, and I hate seeing.
I haven't seen that, so that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, that's what they thought, is that they thought that after this initial funding, that they would be able to sustain it without any town funding.
I have a question. So when would you anticipate this would be starting? Like, as soon as you could get some funding or do you have?
I think you have to advertise it first.
Right, yeah.
Well, I think there's going to be a project rollout of this. Obviously, we have to get the qualified dispatcher scheduler in place and one person that is actually interested in helping in the marketing program. But then the volunteer drivers, probably we could put in place within, once we have that person trained and we've got the program pretty well designed to roll out, then I think the drivers, we could get within, run that course parallel. But I would say within a month or two. I have thought perhaps between 15 and 20 volunteer drivers would be all we would need to handle the various hours. And the software is capable of blocking off the times that they are available and also the times they aren't available. So the dispatcher would be able to see the availability of their drivers pretty carefully. And since we're giving a 48-hour notice of a request for a ride, that's at a minimum, it might be a week out that we know ahead of time we've got a ride scheduled for a medical appointment. Then we can fill those slots fairly easily and give the assurance to the passenger that they're all set. And so consequently, if we have greater demand, then we will increase the volunteer drivers gradually as we see the necessity to do so.
So Paul, the last time I see this in one of the spreadsheets was at our work session on January 3rd, and you guys had it basically in the recommended column when it was at the 150. So can you just?
Yeah.
Where are your heads at with this now?
I think recognizing the impacts of the pandemic and the economic impacts of the pandemic on those in distress, in terms of people needing rides to medical appointments or grocery shopping and so forth, which may no longer be available to them because of the risks of disease or worse in terms of inavailability for resources, it just seems that this is the type of program that, you know, is what's envisioned by many of those who provided this funding opportunity available. So I think that's, and, you know, given the limited scale, you know, there's no guarantee of success ever, but it seems like it's a noble effort in terms of providing services to those in critical need of them. And again, it appears that there's a bridge for success because it's sort of been working off of the existing senior transportation program that is, has been in place for years at the Senior Center. So it just sort of expands that scope into later in the day. So that was, that's my personal feeling on it.
Anybody else have thoughts on this?
I don't have any questions.
I mean, I think it is a, as Paul said, I think there is a need. I mean, I've had calls from people that want to go places where they can't get to now that would be within the range of where this, this service would provide transportation And as Jen and John have said, there probably is going to be that need, and they would probably know that pretty quickly once they get things up and running.
And the calls you had.
Madam Chairwoman, might I say one more thing?
Hang on, we've got a comment, Jen. Go ahead.
Of course. Just a question, the people called, where were they trying to? What?
Emerson Hospital.
Okay.
I mean, what we do know is our. I mean, what, what we do know is our neighboring community of Westford, in partnership with Acton and other, I think Littleton, they have, they run a cross-town connect program that provides transportation for residents of all age. And it's, it's been in existence now for a few years. So, I think as they're noting, the demand appears to be there and, and, and therefore, I, you know, I don't think it's something that just, we're going to hire dispatchers and they're going to, they're not going to know what to do with themselves. I think there is, there is the need for medical appointments, you know, whether, or getting to the hospital, getting to a doctor's office, getting grocery shopping or, or other critical needs. And, oh, Jen, I'm sorry if I cut you off, I cut in front of you.
Yeah, yeah, no, I just, I just wanted to maybe give a, a more concrete example of the type of person that we envision using the service that might be a little bit helpful. A number of months back, I was able to work with a resident who reached out to me. It was actually her neighbor that reached out to me for some help. And obviously, you know, for confidentiality reasons, I won't go into too much detail. But essentially, the situation was the resident had entrusted someone to be providing them with rides for treatment at Lahey Clinic at what was a discounted price below what the resident was paying Uber, which was about $70 to $80 round trip for each visit to Lahey Clinic. This person that the resident entrusted offered to do it for $60 round trip, which in my mind is still exorbitant. And what ended up happening was the person that was entrusted convinced the resident to sign over power of attorney and healthcare proxy to this person. So fortunately, a concerned neighbor called me, I was able to get elder services involved. This was a senior, and things got straightened out. But, but this is, you know, two examples really of, of the high cost of using services like Uber and Lyft that people who have been hit hard by the pandemic just cannot afford. But also, you know, the type of situation where somebody can find themselves in when they don't have family or friends that they can rely on, and they end up putting their trust in the wrong person.
All right. So, how does the board want to handle this? Do you want to go through and get the whole picture on the, the sheets like we did last time and then go back and vote on what we think we want to pass through the next round?
Well, my opinion.
I'd like, who's speaking? George, go ahead.
Sorry. I, I think we're kind of like, you know, getting away from the original intent of what this rescue plan was all about. I mean, we seem to be inventing, and I'm not talking about a particular, this particular situation just because I'm having to bring it up while they're speaking. It's, it's a lot of things that we've brought up. There's no doubt that the ventilation and things like that, you know, were, were needed and, and the cause, because of the pandemic and, and breathing correctly and for the safety of the kids. But I mean, we had employees, we had so many other things. There's a both, you have other companies or, uh, company, yeah, not companies, but within the, within the town who are looking for big money and, and they're charging for their services already and they're getting paid and they're, you know, I mean, I, I think, you know, I think we're kind of like, starting to use a lot of this money for things that we don't, was not the original intent. And that's just my opinion. It's what it's worth.
Thank you, George.
Yeah. That's all I'm going to say. I'm, I'm not feeling that well tonight, and I'm sorry. So I'm going to be signing off fairly well, and I want to thank people who, as you know, I had a little problem and I had a problem, my wife passed on this week, and, and I want to thank everybody. And I hope I'm not out of line by mentioning it, but I want to thank everybody that came forward and supported, fantastically supported my, my, myself and my family. And, and it, it meant a tremendous amount to my, to my family. And again, I want to thank you. And I'm not trying to start a problem with this here. I just think that we're kind of drifting a little bit, and I think the original intent was, was to take care of those people that stepped up when, when, when they, when they were needed in, in critical conditions. So, thank you. I'm sorry. Good night.
Thank you, George.
Yeah.
Which leaves us in a similar situation we were in before, where we don't have a full board anymore.
I, I think some of these things, we, you know, there, there are people here that have been waiting for, for over a month now to get an answer on, on some of their requests. And I think we should at least, you know, consider those if, you know, and I understand what George is saying, but everything on this list is, is eligible. Is that correct, Paul? I mean, there's nothing that's not eligible on this list.
Everything is eligible because of the final rules of the Red Treasury Division. And so how I look at it, in perfect plain English, is the town has been provided $10.6 million of funding, as noted under the lost revenue, as noted from the, from the pandemic and the relief act. The end of the day, the taxpayers of Chelmsford are going to say, what did you do with that once-in-a-lifetime opportunity with $10.6 million? That's how I'm approaching this at this point in time. I agree with George. It wasn't how it was originally constrained. But as sort of, as Mark noted on the other stuff, these, these rules are evolving over time. And at this point, the final rules are in, and that's how I look at it, is, you know, we, we sit here and bemoan the fact of loss of revenue, lack of revenue, we don't have funding, whether it's Chapter 90 funding or what have you for roads or whatever. Now somebody's basically giving the town a check for $10.6 million. And how I think I'm going to be evaluated in my recommendations and how you'll be evaluated in your decision is, how did you use that unique opportunity where somebody handed the town $10.6 million?
So, so could we at least step through the rationale that we have, the other numbers?
Sure.
Why they're in the certain columns?
Yeah, yes. We're glad, we're glad to.
And we can see where we are after we get through the rationale for everything.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I'll, yeah, if you want, I can move on to numbers 30 and 31, the food pantry and table of plenty. Real simply, again, it's $1,000 a month for the five-year period of funding, and that's where you come up with the $60,000, you know, 12 months, a year, five, you know, five years. I see it every day. I know Jen sees it. I think everybody sees it. There's a lot of people hurting from this pandemic, and I think it, it's reasonable for the town to take $120,000 and provide it to the food pantry, half of it to the food pantry, for those who are, who are doing without. Because even though unemployment's back down to 3.9%, there's a segment of the population that is suffering. And, and then same thing with the, with the table of plenty in terms of those who are in isolation as well as in need of a meal. So that's, that's a simple explanation on that one.
We already hit the building code.
That's been withdrawn.
Yep.
Now, that brings you to premium pay. We, we basically politely sidestepped it. As the board, as the board knows, and I'm going to say sidestepped it because quite frankly, to me, this is a collective bargaining issue, in my mind. And that's where it belongs. As you know, we received a letter today from the Chelmsford Federation of Teachers, basically saying, us too. And that's for the paralegal professionals, the teachers, the nurses, you know, clerical, cafeteria workers. I don't know if the right decision for the town is to provide one-time funding as a result of what everybody has gone through, and mindful of the fact that we're not through it yet. But I think the appropriate place for that to occur is at the bargaining table.
So what you're really recommending is that it's not recommended, not that it's deferred?
Right. And then, well, no, it can be deferred because at the end of the day, the select board signs agreements and the school committee signs agreements, and that, and that the funding source for those, for that portion of one-time monies can come from the American Rescue Plan Act.
It seems like what you're recommending is what the Federation of Teachers said though, too, that it may be used in the upcoming contract negotiations.
Exactly. Exactly. And I said that two, two weeks ago when we were here at the table. And I've had no communication, this is not an orchestration, believe me, between me and the Chelmsford Federation of Teachers. You know, because that's, that's clearly not the case. But, but the point is, is if, if that is deemed to be the right decision, then I think that's where it belongs. However, if that is the case, then one of the possible funding sources for those one-time monies can be these source of funds. And again, we have four years to expend those monies and two years, and certainly those bargaining agreements will be completed within a two-year period, we would expect, to get that done. And so that's why we, I recommended deferral and, and explanations to the finance director and town accountant. That's, that's where, where I landed on that issue in terms of, you know, where.
Okay. So it would, you're recommending that it be done as part of the contract negotiations, but that the source of funding could still be this?
Exactly. Which is why we left money unallocated.
Which is why you left it as deferred?
And the other thing I note, and I've said it before, is when I'm contacted, and I've been contacted by my colleagues in our, in our neighboring towns about what's Chelmsford doing with its opera funding, they're not, at this point, they've, none of those communities have approved any funding for premium pay.
We've got a couple I've seen.
And, and so I'll just leave it at that. That, you know, I don't find any of our adjoining communities that we use as comparables who would say, oh yes, that's where we, we're going to allocate our, our funding. So those are the two components that, that weigh in my recommendations.
Any comments from the board so far?
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I agree to defer it at this time until we can fully assess everything else that we have.
Moving on to the water projects, the Chelmsford Water District, North Chelmsford Water District, the water main, you know, you can see the only recommendation there was for the PFAS, which is the town of Chelmsford cost for 54 Richardson Road. I'll, I'll give it, I'll give it a real cut, cut to the chase in this, two issues. When we discuss the water districts, they're not the entire town. So if we provide funding for the Chelmsford Water District and the North Chelmsford Water District, what do we do for the people in East Chelmsford? So there's one issue, okay? Second of all, the water districts have their own cash reserves. They can decide how to utilize those cash reserves. I'm not going to, I'm, they can decide how to utilize their own cash reserve. They don't have opera monies, but they have free cash that's available to them. And I recognize the scope of their budget is different than the scope of the town and the relative, however, the relative balance of their free cash is different than that of the relative to the town. The, in the issue, quite frankly, the final issue and probably the most heavily weighted one is, we've got more demands on our sewer system than, than, than we can fund even with all of our opera money. In terms of the, the ongoing, you know, inspections, replacements and capital requirements in our sewer system, not to mention the PFAS, which we, we know is still a, a big unknown. We've thrown a number of $150,000. That's probably going to get us through the remainder of this fiscal year. Because the money that's been appropriated thus far to install the treat and pump and treat system is just for the installation of that treatment system. It's not for the ongoing water testing, engineering assistance and other work, for the ongoing analysis and engineering and improvements for a system, as we know, is subject to modification over time as we get further into this. So with that being a big unknown, and, and as I've said before, this board and I spend a lot of time looking at the impact of property taxes on residents. Well, the sewer bill goes to all residents of the community. And unlike your property tax, you can't write off, you can't allocate your, your sewer bill to your, when you write off your federal income tax deductions, up to $10,000 as you can for the property tax. So I sit here and struggle saying, well, how are we providing property tax or relief to residents? To me, I'd rather avoid that. If you're giving me a choice, I'd rather avoid it on the sewer bill, which everybody's going to have to pay, and you don't get the tax benefit of, if you're less than $10,000, versus the issue of the property tax. So again, it's not that I don't support the water district, it's not that I don't care, not saying that the requests aren't valid, that they're not important. It just, again, when you weigh the considerations, that's how I landed, came down on it.
Any comments or thoughts from the board?
All right. I, I like that sort of argument on, you know, it affects everybody equally when you're looking at the sewer. And sewer is a huge problem in the town.
I agree with those, those comments. However, you know, I, I give the Chelmsford Water District credit for, for voluntarily, significantly reducing their ask. I mean, perhaps we could allocate some funds to all three based on the amount of the town that they, they cover.
Pat, I'm willing to go before you. We stepped up and we sought funding from the legislature for the water, North Chelmsford Water District PFAS issues.
Okay.
I have no issues in, in the next few, several weeks, when the state's going to do a state budget for the upcoming fiscal year or the continued use of their monies, to request a similar appropriation for the Chelmsford Water District for their PFAS costs. So I'm, I'm, I will, if this board directs me, I will lobby and request that of Representative Golden and our delegation. So, because we did do it for North. And, but let's, let's be mindful, the issue why that was so pertinent was, is they were coming after us for that money anyway. So, you know, let's, let's, let's call it what it is. But I have no issues, Pat, and members of the board, with making similar requests on behalf of the Chelmsford Water District, and they can obviously do it directly as well with, with their legislative delegation, to request financial assistance for PFAS. Because you're right, that this, this PFAS burden is going to be challenging on, on the North Water District, the Chelmsford Water District, and everybody.
And I, I think, Paul, the difference with the North Chelmsford Water District is that we've got town land that has PFAS in it. And, you know, that's, that's where the monies are coming from. I, I, Paul, I agree with the approach to try to help lobby for funding for the other two water departments. Even if the $700,000 was flowed down to the 8,000 water takers, it's $87 a, a household. You know, I, there's just, there's not enough money to go around right now. And I, I, I think we have to be mindful that we do have some things here that maybe don't serve all of the residents, like the transportation thing we just talked about. And that's a different type of rationale, where people are in dire, dire need of support because of the pandemic. But in terms of capital improvements and things like that, I'm kind of with Ken and Paul. I, I think that we should be focusing on what serves the whole town and then do what we did for the North Chelmsford Water District for the other two and try to lobby to get them some funding.
I think that makes sense.
So you want to tackle the sewer tonight?
Do I want to tackle?
I could talk about the sewer stuff.
Paul, the remediation, the line 60, I wasn't sure what that is. That's for the continued implementation of cleaning up.
That's, yeah, that's engineering and ongoing costs with the response at, at 54 Richardson Road. As you know, they're going to go out and do water sampling again next month and so forth. We've got to fund those costs.
All right.
That's separate, that's separate than the funding that was provided for the pump and treat system.
Can you quickly explain the last page?
Can, before you go there, on that one, there is that, on the, the Warren article for spring for the remediation, is that different than?
No, I put that on as a placeholder because I have no idea what, what we may need going into the next year. And so Gary Persketti has asked Weston and Sampson to give us a best estimate of what we're going to need to operate and, and not only operate the system, but also perform the testing, analysis and so forth, you know, as it evolves over time. We, we, you know, you, you've already heard the questions and skepticism from the North Water District about whether what we're doing is going to be sufficient. Well, the only way we're going to know that is by installing that system, getting it running, and then reacting and adjusting as the results come in. Do you want me to move on to the 44 and through 48?
Yeah, it's just, let's just hear the whole story.
Sure.
That's what I'd like to hear.
Yeah, 44 through 48, this has to do largely with the consent order, the, where we have to develop a sewer emergency and operation and maintenance plan update, the assessment for the sewer pump stations and force main assessment. That's, that's directly lifted from the, the consent order. Moving on to the Kensington Road Pump Station Upgrade, that's a sewer capital request, that if it isn't funded there, it's going to the rate payers on a, on the Springtown meeting Warren article, and going to get funded from sewer, sewer fees. And then we deferred the Raymond one because that really is a, not a current fiscal year, but it's, it's probably going to be fiscal '24, as part of that, you know, multi-year pump station upgrade plan. And then the other one is, is what I spoke of earlier, and it's actually on your agenda later on, the 3499, is that first investigation into the sewer infiltration system, where they're going to send down the cameras, clean the pipes, do the testing, you know, segregate it, do the testing, as well as the manhole covers and the, the other work of that first investigation stage of the infiltration system, which again, is part of the consent order, and what we agreed to do. And what that's going to do, the 3499, is going to tell us what we have out there. And oh, by the way, here's the estimate of what it's going to take to, to. what it's gonna take to repair it, which is why you see the gross number, it could be $6.4 million by the time we're done all this.
And 44 through 40, well, you have 47 in the deferred. 44, 45, and 46 are urgent needs right now?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, those are timely. We have to get this work done in, within a calendar year for the plan update and the main assessment. I believe it's, you know, it's just about 12 months from now. And then the investigation and reconstruction would start this spring as part of the first, first phase of the investigation stage. And again, the Kensington Road Pump Station would be work we would do in the fall this year.
Okay, you wanna go to the next block?
Yeah, the next one was stormwater. As you can see, something had to give. So we basically, we basically decided on the $100,000 to do the structural assessments of the culverts in town, not realize, not, you know, diminishing the fact that these drainage improvements have to be out there, but we just didn't feel with the limited funding that, and given the choice, quite frankly, between sewer and stormwater, sewer wins, for two reasons. One, you get the consent order, but the other problem is, is, you know, it's one thing to have minor flooding in a roadway or a neighborhood and so forth, it's another to have sewer blockages and backups and capacity issues. So you say, why did you, why did you weigh sewer over stormwater? That's why, so.
Well, if you have another break near water or anything, it's gonna be expensive.
Exactly. Yeah, whereas the stormwater ones tend to be more surface level. As you saw, 54 and 55, Chelmsford Telemedia withdrew those requests, recognizing the funding constraints. And then the next one, 59, fire rescue one truck replacement, 857,373, we recommend funding. And basically, what this is gonna do is come right off of the capital list for fiscal '24. And the reason for it is twofold. One is, we obviously were oversubscribed for capital in terms of the buildings that we have in town and the replacement of fire and other apparatus in the community. The second reason is, again, it's a benefit for everybody. I mean, you're talking a rescue truck. So regardless of how many stations we configure, what ends up happening with the fire station configuration and deployment of officers, we, you know, we gotta replace the existing rescue truck, which is sent at our headquarters. Third is a tangible item, so therefore people see it, you know, what'd you do with the $10 million? Hey, look, there's a $900,000 rescue truck that benefits the community. Everyone's going forward. And so basically, that's, that's the key reason as to why are we funding, recommending funding of a rescue truck is, it's a need. And lastly, the supply chain issues are now ridiculous. So not only is the cost of fire apparatus going up, but your wait time, and Gary Ryan's on the call, it could be 18 months before you get a fire apparatus. Gary, I'll turn it over to you if anything you want to add on this.
Mr. Manager, thank you, and good evening, board members. I do appreciate the opportunity to bring this before you. As the manager said, this has been on the capital committee's list, our five-year plan. One of the things that I mentioned when I brought this before the capital committee is, we've had significant mechanical issues with this truck. In particular, we had to replace the transmission last year, replaced the fuel system, and the voltage system. It came to $18,000. Recently, this truck was out on Route 3 at that unfortunate fatal accident. It was out on the highway for hours, and we just lost the water pump. And the more significant issue with this truck, and others that we have, it has a diesel engine, known as a Max Force diesel engine. They no longer make this engine. So we can't even get the parts. We have to go to a secondary market to get the parts. So not only is it hard and more expensive to replace the parts, but it's time, it's, like the manager was saying, it takes us a long time with the shipping and the cost constraints and the supply chain issues. It puts this truck out of service for a long period of time. So I appreciate your consideration for this very important piece of apparatus. Thank you.
Any comments or questions on that one? Okay, and so can we, can we talk about line 60, which is the new request for the fire department cancer screening blood tests?
Sure.
I just made up that number.
Okay, I think John has it at 61, but that's okay.
Oh, it's 61? Okay, sorry, I didn't see it up there. So, so, go ahead.
Yeah.
That request was $17,000?
Right.
The number's in there, okay.
Again, I'll be rather direct and blunt, perhaps not diplomatic as it should be. It came in late. Again, we didn't have a chance to review it. The packets were going out. It came in late on, you know, the day the packets were going out. Second, I think similar to the premium pay, this is probably something that does perhaps belong in a collective bargaining issue, in terms of providing a benefit for the membership. And the reason I ask that is, is, you know, to go to George's question earlier about, well, how is this related to COVID? Cancer screening, COVID, you know, I don't know. But I will say this, but I will say this, because it's, you can say it's not directly COVID, but I'm not gonna sit here and say, and the statistics provided, there's a higher incidence of cancer on firefighters. There's no question, nobody's gonna dispute that. But I guess my question is, is, when do we do it again? We do cancer screening to, you know, five months from now.
Well, you could ask the same question about the police department and the heart screening, which we approved.
Exactly. And that was my, that was my point.
Which we did fund.
Right, right, right. And that was exactly my point, is to, when do we do it again? And then do we do it as new members come on board? Do we do it every three years, every five years, every seven years? And then the next question I have is, what about my other employees? I have DPW workers who are out in the sun during the summer months. Are we gonna test them for melanoma or another, you know, I don't, it just becomes a question of, of, you know, you open the door, and then the next request comes in, and then the next request comes in, very similar to the premium pay. And my concern is, is there's a cancer presumption, we know, under the state law for police and fire, just like the heart lung bill and so forth. I haven't, the state hasn't mandated this testing. I guess if they did, we'd have to do it. I'm not saying it's wrong to do it, but I guess the question is, is what is the overall plan for this, not only for the police, but for the fire, but for the, but for the other workers who have exposures to whether the sun or other issues.
Do you want to say something?
Yes, I would say that it does align with our recent initiatives for cancer awareness. So we've held cancer awareness classes. We've had it several times. We've also hosted skin cancer screenings. We're one of the first departments to host in the station skin cancer screenings. We've had 20 members that were screened back in 2019. Of the 20, five of them were referred for additional checkup. So this initiative, I do agree with it. I know it did come in late, but I think that was based on looking at the interpretation from the U.S. Department of Treasury, and looking at what the police just submitted and got approved for. I do agree with this. I think it, not only does it align with what we're doing, as far as changing out our gear, we just got a grant for another extracting machine, and that is something that we worked on together, the officers, the firefighters. We have a safety committee. So I think this does align with those initiatives. Thank you.
What was the basis of your cost estimate? I see what's in the packet. I went to the website, and it just seemed funky. I mean, there was no $189 cost per test. There was a button you could click if you wanted to do department testing or something like that, and it went to nowhere. So is this a quote that you guys got from somebody?
The union did break that down, yes. They got a quote, and it's broken down between the cost of the test, the medical authorization, drawing blood, and the shipping cost. So a total of $253. Again, the union put this together.
And why do you need a 15% contingency for something as straightforward as this?
That I don't have an answer for.
Thoughts, anybody?
Yeah, I'm still having trouble between the, what we approve for the police, and then not, not looking at this. I mean, I'm having trouble, we already did one.
Right, but then do we go further, is my question. Do we now, do we now offer something for the cemetery and public works employees who are out exposed?
They have a choice to cover up and wear sunscreen. The firefighters don't have a choice not to go in the building. The police don't have a choice not to respond to a, you know what I'm saying? I mean, I think it's, I don't think that's an apples-to-apples comparison. But, Pat, Ken, what do you think?
No, I agree 100%. I, you have the, you know, the police officers are standing on the side of the road breathing fumes while they're pulling cars over, and you have the fire department, you know, running into houses, being, you know, subject to whatever's inside, and on top of, they don't, I mean, they don't know what they're walking into some of these houses. And, not that we have a lot of fires, but, you know, probably only takes one to screw someone's lungs up. So I agree with all of that. I think we did it for the police, we should do it for the fire.
But you have public works employees who are exposed to raw sewage. You've got public highway employees who are exposed, standing next to paving jobs and so, you know, with the materials that come out of that, and as well as sun issues. So I'm just saying is, if we're going there, then we should go there, you know, good for one, good for all.
But did the study show that DPW workers have a higher incidence of cancer?
I can prob, I'm sure if I go ask them, I'm sure they'll get me a study that shows it.
Yeah, but the state has come out and said that they, I mean, they accept the police and fire, that it's a true issue.
I mean, it is, it is our call, and I agree. I agree with what's been said.
With what's been said where?
What's been said about how, yeah, what we did for the, for the police, and it is a concern. I mean, I've been hearing about that for years from the firefighters, about how they're more liable to contract cancer and.
Right, and an ongoing thing, Paul, to be, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, especially for these dollars. I mean, you know, it's, I'm assuming this is a one-time thing, and then, yeah, if they come back again, and there'll have to be some other funding, or it will have to be bargained.
Or it'll have to be part of the negotiations and so forth, but this will get a baseline started.
Okay. I just like.
I understand your point. I wish I heard that point a little bit clearer on the police side, because we already did that. And I think that this, this is a very similar, you know, type of condition that these guys are up against and ladies, and I think they should be, I think they should be looked after.
I mean, ultimately, these are your decisions. I mean, we actually, I don't know if you saw the other chart, but we didn't recommend the police. It was when Jim Spinney came back on and said he would really wish that we would reconsider his, his request. We actually, actually said no to that. So we're kinda saying the same thing, but this is ultimately your decision. Yes, you did, you did decide to go ahead and fund police, so now you need to make a decision whether you want to move forward. We're just making, we made our recommendations, and now, this is ultimately now your recommendation, but we didn't recommend with the police on that.
Right, but it's different, Darlene having a check in a box and.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just saying, you're, but Paul was, right, I'm just saying, but Paul was giving his recommendation to this. We have this, we're making the same recommendation that we made for the police, but now you, you guys decided to fund the police. So now you need to make a recommendation whether you wanna, how you wanna move forward, do with the rest.
I get that, but I just hear a lot more strong, a strong pushback on this, versus, I don't remember, a strong pushback on the police.
All I'm saying is, is now that the door's open, it should be expanded to others at risk. That's my point. So I'm not saying don't fund it. I'm just saying is, if you've now funded the police, and you've now funded the fire, then I think we've gotta look at other groups, you know, those who are, you know, I don't know if we should be testing our sewer guys for hepatitis, I don't know, or we should be testing our, the highway guys for, but I'm just saying is, if that's the case, because.
We can make that call.
They gotta come, and if it comes.
We can make that call.
Are these tests and the screenings, are they anything that physicians do as a matter of course, because of your occupation?
Again, if that were the case, it'd be covered by your, should be covered by Blue Cross and Blue Shield for health insurance, if somebody had a.
Well, that's where.
Chief, I'm asking you, is this, is this anything that people have done anyway, as a matter of course, as part of their physicals, because of their occupation?
It is my understanding that you have to pay extra. It's not covered, not all of this, unless there's a probably pre-existing condition. I don't believe this is covered.
Okay.
Understanding medical health insurance claims, probably what would happen is if they went to their primary care doctor and said, this is my occupation, this is my concern, and he said to them, I'm gonna, you know, order the tests. What do they have, do they have a deductible in Chelmsford?
Incoherent.
So it'd probably go towards a deductible portion, because it's not preventive.
Yeah, they'd still have to pay out of pocket.
So they would have to pay out of pocket for the deductible portion until they hit it.
Unless they've already hit whatever their deductible is.
Right. So do you want to vote on this tonight, or do you want to vote on this and the sewer tonight?
Well, I'm going back to the board. We've got, we basically got a number of things that are in the recommended column right now.
Right, and if you add them all up, there's $2 million there.
Well, it's a little over that now.
Well, I'm looking at.
Because you added, you added another $100,000 for transportation, and possibly another $17,500 for the blood tests.
Yeah, that's about $2 million.
Well, I mean, I'm okay with.
2.2 million.
You're okay with what, Ken?
I was gonna say, I'm okay with 44, 45, 46, 47, 48 tonight, and then 61.
What about the, what wouldn't be fair? 29, 30, 31?
I don't know, I'm still mulling those over in my head. To me, 29 sounds like we're competing against Uber or somebody else. I'm nervous when she said we had to get some vehicles, repurpose them. I was gonna sideline, dive more into that with either Paul or Jen, like, which vehicles, how much is that gonna cost? You know what I mean? There's, I had a lot of maybe little questions that were still bouncing around in my head. So I wasn't ready to vote on those tonight.
All right, so you don't feel ready to vote on 29, 30, or 31, or just 29?
Just because he doesn't, doesn't mean the rest of us are not.
No, I'm asking.
I'm, I'm ready to vote on.
If he wants to go.
If you want to vote on him, that's fine.
If, if you want to get more data, I would ask that you do it before our meeting next week, so we can just be done.
Just in 29, I didn't know how many vehicles, which vehicles were being repurposed. I mean, if there are out-of-commission vehicles that were going off to the auction or whatever, now they're coming back in. I mean, I just don't, that part I didn't understand, and I figured off one, I could go ask and get some more data, so it wasn't really.
And we don't, we still don't have where's the money coming from in year two, like, written down. That's what I think we had asked for.
Yeah, I can tell you is, for example, Chuck, speaking to Chief Spinney today, the four new cruisers are arriving in the community. So the answer to your question is, normally we would take those four cruisers that are taken out, and you said go to the auction. My sense is, is what we would do is divert them instead to this program.
But didn't we?
And then we pay maintenance and everything for them?
What's that?
Then we have to maintain the vehicles, right?
Right, exactly.
Instead of getting rid of them.
But wasn't there a comment made to me last week that we had electric vehicles that Gary was meeting with someone that potentially go to auction? Like, why would we keep cruisers and not?
We don't, we're not, we're not bringing auction any electric vehicles.
There was a comment last week, and I forget, we were at some function, and someone said, oh, so-and-so's late, he's working with, having vehicles go off to auction.
Yes, yeah.
Yes, we just did.
We just did. We just sold, we just sold some vehicles at auction, a sidewalk plow and a few other items, yeah.
Oh, so it wasn't like transportation?
They were DPW, DBW equipment.
Yeah. And it was an old Toyota Echo, which was like a 2000.
That was a donation back in the day.
It was a donation car, yeah.
We had to get a duplicate.
All right, so you bring up four cruisers.
Right.
I mean, I know what size engines are in those. How efficient is that?
They're not.
No, no.
You know, these are what's going around in my head.
I think it needs to be more written down on this one.
I have the same questions about 29. I'm not sure about that either. 30 and 31, I'm fine with.
So I guess we need, I think what I'm hearing is, let's, let's write something down on 29, so people know, the questions are answered and it's clear.
Right. And I'm not, so in, so I'll go on to 30 then, 31. Table of plenty is primarily Chelmsford residents, correct? Or can it be open, open everybody?
It's a community thing.
It's a community thing. I don't, yeah, I don't know that they're checking.
It's not just Chelmsford.
They don't check IDs, I don't think.
Because I was gonna say, I've worked it for a while at the Community Exchange, it's the same thing. I mean, we, people will come in there from Fitchburg, come in there from Framingham, come in there. As long as everybody's aware of that, we're not, you know.
I know table of plenty is not just Chelmsford, from something else I'm involved in.
I know they don't check IDs downstairs.
And there's probably similar offerings in other communities that people from Chelmsford go to.
You know, that's very common, because people don't like to go to their own food pantry.
That's true, yeah.
Believe me, I, these are, I've had a lot of conversations about what goes on there. So, you know, I'm ready to. So, you know, I'm ready to vote if you want to vote on those. That's fine.
30 and 31?
Yep.
You're okay with the five-year time span?
No, I said I was okay to vote.
Okay.
Yes, I'm okay with it.
Is there a motion?
Do you want me to start going through these?
Yeah.
All right, so I'll, I'll make a motion to approve project number 30, the Community Exchange Food Pantry, for $1,000 a month for five years.
You're going to do one out of 10?
Why don't you do 30 and 31 together?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve item, project number 30 and 31, Community Exchange Food Pantry Table Plenty for $1,000 a month each for five years.
I'll second the motion.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 4-0, one absent. Okay, now we're down to line 60. Or do we want, Paul, do you need some specific direction from us to look at legislative earmarks for the water departments, or is the conversation we had enough?
I think the conversation, um.
I think that's enough.
Yeah, I think it's enough, yeah. That's enough, yeah.
Line 60.
Do you want to do anything on the 44 through 48?
60 comes before that.
60 is on page two, at the bottom of page two.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was going in order. All right, so I'll make a motion to approve project number 60, PFAS remediation for 54 Richardson Road in the amount of $150,000.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 4-0, one absent. So now we're at 44, 45, 46, and 48.
Yep.
I'm ready to vote.
Any discussion on the sewer ones?
No.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve project number 44 Sewer Emergency in the plan update for $35,000. Project number 45 Sewer Pump Station Enforced Man Assessment for $200,000. 46 Kensington Road Pump Station Upgrade for $265,000. And the Sewer Infiltration Investigation, project number 48, for six, well, for $349,000.
900.
900.
I'll second the motion.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 4, and one absent.
I'll make a motion to approve project number 61, the firefighter cancer screening, the amount of $17,457.
And we missed 53. Are we going to do 53?
53 and 59, we got two.
We can take 61, since he made the motion. Do we have a second?
Did you just want to go past that?
He made the motion.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, 4-0, one absent.
So Mark, you said 53 and 59?
Well, those were the other ones that were here.
Those are the ones that are left and recommended. Any discussion on 53 to do the assessments for the culverts?
I mean, is that something we have to?
I think the reason we did it is we wanted to know what we don't know. Honestly, we all want to do the assessments is want to know what we.
Kind of like the sewer that we don't know.
Yeah, what don't we know that's out there with the culverts in town? And then it may also enable us to apply for some grants in terms of, you know, the culvert grants from the state, as well as the, you know, the climate change structure, those things that, you know, if not this round, then the next following round.
When is the, this round, or when's the next round?
Uh, the, the climate change resiliency grants are coming up later this spring. I don't know the exact date of the culvert grants from the state, but that's, but we really, the reason we recommended that one was to basically know what we don't know, because it just, see, those are the culverts that the state doesn't inspect. So for example, the state does all the bridges and they do the main culverts. These are the ones that don't fall into the state inspection program, so we really wanted to get a sense of what's out there that we could, you know, really need to have our eye on.
Well, that, is that enough to do all the culverts in town?
Yeah. Minor culverts. Again, the state does the big ones, the old school streets and so forth, yeah.
Yeah. So, you want to vote on them? Are you good? I'll make a motion to approve project number 53 Culvert Structural Assessments for $100,000.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, 4, and one absent.
Are we ready for a fire truck?
So it's here, or it's FY '23 capital, basically?
If I could, it'd actually be on FY '24, because there's another fire truck on this year, used capital plan.
Oh, we already did FY '23.
It'd be FY '24.
Is there like a, a rush to get that approved because of the, the time delays and trucks ordering, or?
Yes, I think that is a concern that we see, is that.
Probably going to take.
Was this one, was this one?
The cost keeps going up and the delays keep going further out.
It'll take two years to be built, probably.
Was this one of the trucks that, that broke down, or that we had to do repairs on that contributed to the station closure on Rich?
No, Gary can speak to that if he's still on the call, but the station closure is, we have two reserve engines. And Gary, you want to speak to the fact of the station closure?
Right, so we had two reserve engines, as you know, and the reserve engines were put into frontline service because of repairs to the other apparatus. The rescue was put in Engine 3 to keep it open. But again, this truck has had significant repair issues. We're having difficulty getting the parts, the second every mark, because they don't want, no one to make it. So, and again, we spent 17, $18,000 last year to repair it. And the truck, we just got it back today because we lost a water pump after that incident over on Route 3. So you see the cost escalating to put into this truck, and I believe the comment is correct. It's going to take probably a year, year and a half to replace it, if we go out with an order.
Would you say, Mark?
I'm, I'm more concerned with the engine, you know, the engine with the fact that that's kind of an outdated version, and if that goes, that's the, that's the shooting match right there. That's it. I mean, water pumps, those things can go, but the other piece, that's a pretty big deal. And that'll take it out of commission, and then you'll have all that lead time too. And you might have to throw good after bad, just to Band-Aid it, is what I'm concerned about.
So, any other?
You know, and if it's on the plan, then they've kind of known this was coming, so.
Ready, boss?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve project number 59, Fire Truck Number One Truck Replacement, Fire Rescue Number One Truck Replacement in the amount of $857,373.
I'll second the motion.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 4 in favor, one absent.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. So the next meeting agenda, next Monday night, you want us to come back with more information on the transportation program, in terms of what vehicles and how we're going to fund it?
Either next Monday or the one after that, whenever you're ready.
Okay, the 14th of February. Okay, all right, is there, if there's anything else, maybe just like a roughed up budget.
And how we're going to fund it in the out years.
Yeah, like how much are the vehicles, what do you think gas is going to run us? What are we going to be paying these dispatchers, and it's part-time, I assume?
Okay.
How many hours?
Okay, all right, so probably have that.
What are, what are the funding sources and how are we going to get to what we need?
We'll probably have that at your February meeting, because if, we're going to be putting, we're going to be sending packets out in a couple days, but Monday night, so, okay, all right. I'll work with Jen and others, and John to get that.
Let me apologize to Jen and Jeff.
John.
John.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Paul, are we ready for Town Manager?
Yeah.
Thank you, Darlene and John for.
Thank you.
Thank you, John, Darlene.
I, I know this, you guys have been here some long hours with us, and I appreciate all the work you're doing to help us prepare too.
Well, I'm seeking your approval to enter into a contract for the, with Weston and Sampson engineers for the engineering services related to the Sewer System Evaluation Survey first project. The project amount is a $349,9, which is included in the ARPA thing, funding that you noted earlier. The specific line of work, as called for in, in the plan, is 98,400 linear feet of sewers with, again, they'll do light cleaning, closed circuit, television inspections, a physical survey of 470 sewer manholes, and then based upon that, we'll come out with a summary report, which include recommendations and a prioritization analysis for the rehabilitation of those pipeline and manhole defects and sources of infiltration and infill that have been identified during the investigation.
Any questions?
So I just have a couple of questions about maybe the type of, on page seven of the agreement, at the very first line, it says, "All plans, disputes, and controversies arising between the owner and any engineer." Does that, should that be Town?
Yeah, I think Town is defined as the, as the owner, yes.
Okay. And the other one is on the scope, the very last sentence.
What section are you in, Pat?
Pardon me?
What page or section?
Well, it doesn't have a page, no, it's in the attachment.
The attachment A, okay.
The, the last, the last page, the last sentence, it refers to the Town's Water Division.
Yeah, it really means the Water District, yeah. The, in other words, because they.
Yeah, well, maybe reference all of them, because they'll be in all three districts, correct?
Yeah.
So, just a, if you don't really have a Water Division in town.
Okay. Okay.
I just, I just have a process question. Is, I know that we've had, have a very close relationship with Weston and Sampson, and they've been helping us through this, and I'm very happy with the support we've gotten from them. Are they like the only game in town? Because it seems like, like we don't get multiple quotes, and so they're the ones that gave us the $350,000 estimate, and so of course they're going to bid to $350,000 if there's no competition. So I, I just, I don't, it's the same question I had with the fire station, like why we get only one bid? Is it because of the reputation or the relationship, or is this something that other, there's other firms that could do that, that we should try to get multiple bids, or?
Yeah, I mean, we can do, we can.
And I don't mean that in a critical way, I just don't get it.
I think the, I think the issue with Weston and Sampson is, is they were involved with the construction of the system and have the knowledge of what's entailed in our system.
Oh, okay, I didn't, I didn't understand that. When the sewer system was initially built?
Yes.
Okay.
But I agree, it's not, it's not an unreasonable thing periodically that you appear review.
And I don't do work on my house without getting three quotes, you know, so.
Neither.
And this is, this is the price of a small house. What?
Get someone I trust, and I just say, do it. Not even ask for a price.
I'll get three anyway.
Different strokes. Okay.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, I need a break.
Okay, we're going to take a couple minutes?
Yeah, thank you.
Quick, while he's gone.
I need water.
So I don't know if it was just me, but that presentation that Joe Tierney gave, it was different than the one that was in my.
Yeah, he sent it out at the 11th hour. I'll send it to you guys, I'm sorry.
It was a little different. I mean, there was some similar, but.
Yeah, two, yeah.
I had to scribble down notes off of his to make the motion, or, yeah.
I was in the middle of a meeting when he sent it.
Late night decisions. Was John sporting a beard? Do you got a beard under that mask, John? You have a beard under that mask?
All right, we're back in session, too late. Okay, so we're, we're on the Sewer System Evaluation Survey proposal. Any other discussion?
So I'll make a motion to approve the bid award to Weston Sampson for the Spring 2022 Sewer System Evaluation Survey.
I'll second the motion.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, 4 in favor, 1 absent.
Thank you. Okay, and then my report this evening, I just have three items. The first one is, is five weeks from now, you have scheduled to sign the warrant for the Spring Annual Town Meeting. So here's the first draft of the warrant. I'll bring the next one, and probably won't have anything for next Monday, but the, your meeting on the 14th, and then your final one, which you'd sign would be on the 28th. So, at this point, I only have 26 articles with a couple potential beyond that. And most of these are just traditional articles at Spring Town Meeting. You see, the first articles are standard, you know, adjusting the current year's operating budget, funding any collective borrowing agreements that are reached, the Shobatech budget, school budget, general government budget, Finance Committee Reserve Fund, capital budget. And then I put in the citizen petition article, because I know we try to show some deference to those who do citizen petitions. And so I put that up there for the school bus tracking system. And then, then there'd be an article for PFAS as a placeholder for Richardson Road. Article 11 through 15 of the revolving funds for Sewer Enterprise, Stormwater Forum, Peg Access, and the Golf Course. And then the 16 is the departmental revolving funds, again, ministerial, those tend to be consent order for departmental revolving funds, and same thing Cemetery Improvement Development Fund and Community Action Program Fund. 18. Article 19 is a placeholder in case there is money to put into the Affordable Housing Stabilization Fund. And then, from there, you then go to the Community Preservation Fund, the annual funding of the upcoming fiscal year's debt service, admin expenses, and reserves. And then, the ones that I mentioned earlier, covered earlier, the Varney Playground Equipment, the Outdoor Fitness Park, the McKay Library HVAC, North Town Hall HVAC, Center Town Hall HVAC. And then 26 is Street Acceptance, perhaps Charles Way, although I'm working with Attorney Havity to find out if this really can get done with, with counsel for the property owners, see if this really can get done by Spring Town Meeting, or this may have to wait till Fall Town Meeting. And then the only other things that I know of at this point in time, since I put this list together, is Evan Blansky informed me the planning board is going to discuss at their meeting on Wednesday whether they have articles for Spring Town Meeting. He thinks the one article they may have might be an update to the flood zone maps, and that's periodic article, I think we do pad every five or so years, where the federal government comes up with the updated flood zones. Again, that's a ministerial article. And then, as I mentioned earlier this evening, I'm expecting in the, the next week to receive the appraisal on the municipal parking lot area in the center. So that may be something that goes to Town Meeting, or ARPA funding, or wherever, I don't know, but it, it's just something that's out there. I don't know what the amount is and where that's going to go. So, is it relatively short warrant at this point for spring? You remember last year, we had almost 50 articles? But that's where we're at. So if there's anything else you can think of, either this evening or over the next couple of weeks, let me know, because I said on the 14th, I'll bring you the final draft, and then on the 28th, you would sign the warrant for Spring Town Meeting.
Paul, just from my education, so we approved charter amendments at the Fall Town Meeting, what are all the questions at the beginning of this warrant?
Those are, those are the approvals. In other words, the charter amendments are a two-step process. The first step is approval at Town Meeting, the second is a. The first step is approval at town meeting, the second is approval at the ballot of the next town election.
Oh, that's part of the ballot?
That's part of the ballot, yeah. Yeah, so, yeah, all those questions were approved from the, so town council will review the language of those, and then if they're approved at the ballot, then they'll become enacted, and then we'll make those changes to the town code.
Okay.
So that's, that's it for the draft of the town meeting warrant. The next item I have is, since your last meeting, we received correspondence from Mass Housing, which was a cost examination for the Beaverbrook Crossing 40B Affordable Housing Development. The report came back, the audit, they basically said, "Do you have any comments on this thing?" They basically found that the audit of the, the Beaverbrook, that's the one at Hunt and Littleton Road. They came back, found that the audit report was, independent audit report, found that the project was in compliance with the 40B programs. Sent it to David Hettison, who's our advisor on this, compliance officer, he reviewed it, said he had no issues either. So, it just really formalized it for the board, that if you have no objections, I'll just notify the board that, the board's reviewed it, along with our consulting advisor, David Hettison, and that we have no comments or concerns with the audit report, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then the last thing I want to note was the Mass, the Mass Housing Fiscal Year 22 firefighting safety equipment grant award that Chief Ryan contributed, submitted. The town of Chelmsford Fire Department was awarded $14,969.35. Under this program, it's going to purchase a washer extractor machine for firefighting So that, that concludes my report.
And you put some stuff in the packet regarding communications goal, Paul? So you want to talk about that?
Yeah, just quickly, as we, this was sort of moved forward to, from the last agenda, this was the, you know, the issue of how to proceed with regarding resident communication that was on the list of goals. Number eight, you know, where the plan and hope is to have this thing done by the, you know, end of the fiscal year in June, about identifying and implementing ways to improve communication with residents, in looking at the press, website, social media, and so forth, by examining our current communication methods and suggested improvements, and new ways of identifying. And I provided that list, as we saw last time, of how we try to communicate through Chelmsford telemedia, through cable casts, these type of programs, cable access programs, the town's website, we have newsletters from the library, senior citizens newsletter, the superintendent of schools does a weekly newsletter, we utilize social media, Facebook and Twitter, as well as our town report. And then, as you know, we're having lesser coverage from our print media, reflecting what's going on in that industry from the Little Sun and the Independent, as well as some ancillary coverage from 980 CAP Radio and City Life program. So, in thinking of this, in terms of what we can do, and what, looking at what other communities do, I, the suggestion I had, and I worked with Lisa Maroni, is perhaps to step up the effort a little more, is to put some type of a community newsletter from the town, out, and at least a monthly basis, if not more frequently, depending on what it is. For example, let me tell you where I think this would be helpful. I mean, yeah, we're going to get news blasts and so forth about, you know, they're working on Boston Road, avoid that area, and trash delayed, and so forth. But when you had Frank Green and Sam Chase come in and sort of explain the whole assessing process, that's not a news flash, and that's not in depth, but I think it's something that we're missing, because we're not getting coverage of what transpires, whereas a decade ago, or two decades ago, you'd have stuffing in the news weekly, where, you know, they'd be covering all different types of board meetings and what's going on. And, and so because of that, you see sort of what happened with the tax thing, is where Frank and Green and Sam Chase had to come in and sort of just explain the process and so forth. And I guess what I'd like to do is try to get ahead of that. And therefore, by using a newsletter, we can provide information. So for example, here's, if I would issue this, this month of this week, what I would say is, hey, look, we've got a special town meeting coming up on February 26th. These are the five articles, or six articles, you know, the big one is, you know, the redevelopment of the UMass West Campus, and, oh, by the way, here are the links, or, you know, to view the proceedings that were presented to the finance committee, you know, to the planning board, and so forth. And, you know, for, if you want additional information, you know, contact Community Development Office, and so forth. I think that's sort of the one thing that I guess we, we don't have. And, and, you know, it is telling that, you know, we've had town meetings recently where there isn't even a preview story. And I think that's where you get the pushback from the residents, well, we don't know what's going on. And even the thing on River Neck Road, I would have liked to have been ahead of it, because people heard the same thing, well, where did this come from? What's this about? And, and I've tried to just provide some information on social media, but that's sort of like pushing against the tide, in terms of, you know, where did this come from? What's this about, you know? And so...
Yeah, it's better that you're not interactive sometimes on social media, it's better that you're putting out information and facts.
And then that way, then that way you can say, hey, look, you want information, are the town, you know, we issued this back in January of 2022, to explain, you know...
Well, that's why the police department uses Twitter.
Right.
Because you can't respond.
Right.
And, you know, the town, Facebook, you can respond.
Right.
Different social media works differently.
So I think that's the kind of thing that I'm envisioning, that we need to do a better job in terms of the micro, the macro issues, in terms of, you know, this, this is what we're doing in the town, and, you know, and, and not just in my office, but from, you know, what's happening in terms of DPW, so for example...
Jen Malanson?
Jen Malanson, yeah, exactly.
What Lisa's got going on?
Yeah, exactly, Lisa's doing. I just think that, that's sort of something that, you know, we, and then what I would do is actually put out printed copies of it at the senior center, and even downstairs here in the building, so that when, in the libraries, that way, hopefully, because there are some people who aren't going to go to the website, or we're not going to reach by email, or can't.
Right.
And I think that that might be something that we're not doing. And I know it's more that we're taking on, you know, for example, the snowplowing thing, you all saw the stuff. I think if we'd gone out and said, hey, look, and, and sometimes we think people know what we don't know, but I think if we basically said, hey, look, you know, we've raised our snowplow rates, we can't get enough contractors, therefore, your side roads are going to be more delayed in terms of snow removal than, than you've seen in typical winters. And oh, by the way, we're not putting sand down anymore, so that's going to be an issue as well, because you don't have the traction on the roadways, you know, that you would have in other winters, because people say, well, I didn't see anything. I think those are the type of things that I think we could have gotten ahead of. And also, what I'd say, like, right now, is I'd have one out saying, hey, on February 28th, the select board's going to discuss roads and sidewalk plans for the upcoming year, you know, please, you know, please attend the meeting at 6 o'clock on, you know, room 204, or by Zoom, you know, here's an opportunity, you know, I think it's, those are the type of things that, you know, we're just, we're just not reaching anymore, whereas in years past, you know, we'd get a call, either we'd have questions at the end of the meeting from media, or calls the next day, saying, hey, can you tell us something about, you know, give us more information about, and then you'd read a story in the paper about, you know, town, and it just...
And I like the way this looks, and...
Yeah, she used constant contact, you know, she did that.
One of the things that just sort of jogged in my head as I'm looking at this, I know you, there was a sign board up in front of McCarthy, looking for snowplow drivers, right? And it was a good message board.
Yeah.
And I also know, like, everybody gets their vacation jokes is driving by McCarthy, which is another sign board right next to it. You know, they always put up like a joke each, when they're on vacation, it's a, and it changes every couple of days, or whatever. But you also have a sign board at the senior center, and Lisa's talking about a sign board on 129, right?
Yeah, that, it's got to be a static sign on 129, we couldn't get...
Would it be worth it to figure out a different place to put the sign, so that we could change it, so that you have three major points in town where you could put data out, put information out?
We, we could probably look, we continue to look on 129, yeah. We'll, we'll continue to do that.
Because if you had those three boards at certain times, putting out like, you know, discussion on sidewalks coming up this Tuesday night, 7:00 PM, and it was running on all three signs, that's, you got north, you got right off the rotary, and you got right off 129, those are...
Yeah, we were hoping to put a 129 welcome sign, that the problem is, is we discovered, the state right-of-way at, at 129 goes all the way past where the rotary sign is, almost to the driveway at, at, you know, 330 Barica Road. And so, if we had, and then the other question became power source, we didn't have a meter, we didn't have a pole, and, and then there was an issue of national grid right-of-way, and so that's why we moved to a static sign. But we can look at it, you know, at perhaps other places.
Because there's another one in front of town hall, right?
No, no. So anyway, we'll, we'll look at that, but we're just trying to, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, just a couple, a couple of comments before you move on, I mean, yeah, that's fine, but there's limited information you can put on those boards.
I agree.
And I think there should also be a way, if you're going to, you know, it's, it's good that you would have hard copies at the senior center and library, and, you know, whatever other places, but, and I hate to make more work, but maybe there should be a way that people that are homebound can sign up to have one delivered to their, to their home. I mean, not to do it to flood the whole town, like, you know, with the, like the DPW does, but there might be 100 or 200, or maybe even more than that, people that, you know, live in some senior housing, or whatever, that it would be beneficial to, to have them...
To actually have them mailed.
Or, or put the newsletters in the lobby of the senior living buildings.
Yeah, but there's other people too, that, that don't live in those buildings.
Yeah.
And they wouldn't have to sign up for it, you know, maybe, you know, maybe you could reduce the number of...
That's true.
That you could, that you'd have to mail out, by doing that. But, you know, there's always people you're going to miss.
Right.
You know, it can't be just people that are, that have a computer at home.
Right, who say, sign up, put me on the, you know, the list, you know, that automatic distribution list, electronically.
Well, maybe that's, not to throw it on Jen, but if, it sounds like she's keeping a list of homebound people, or has somewhere to get that information.
Maybe that...
Maybe it's part of the service, when you register with Jen that you're homebound and need help, that you also get the newsletter.
But you have to have others too, because a lot of people that are not going to go to Jen, that still would want it. I mean, I'd say put it in a tax, you know, tax bill, but that's not going to work either. I mean, maybe a census, a census you do once a year, and maybe something in that, but otherwise...
I think it's a consistent long-term message. Like, you got to just keep sending out in different spots, so people see it.
Right.
Do you, do you have a sense of how many people actually respond to Twitter? Like, you brought up the, the police and fire and so forth, which I think that's fine. But between that, and Facebook, and so forth, you know, who do we really reach with these things? And is there a way to improve that?
If you, if you look at the enrollment list, that Chelmsford News has over 10,000 followers.
And they don't all live in Chelmsford.
They don't all live in Chelmsford, so we don't quite know. But even if half of them live in Chelmsford, that's 5,000 people.
Yeah.
You know, and then, you've got the other variants, we don't know, you know.
But, you know, like, like, you know, Mark mentioned earlier, I mean, you put something on Chelmsford News, and you start the conversation very often. You know, so I think if, if there are ways that, that, as he said, where you can put out the facts, and not have somebody come in and then...
And if they want to play with them, they play with, they just don't respond to it. But just get the, keep getting the facts out there, I think, is what's important. You know, I've seen, you know, you guys occasionally will respond to things, which I think Evan actually responded one recently, did an awesome job with it.
Yeah.
But, you know, you can always get into that situation where you get, you start getting combative, or people that are kind of playing games a little bit, as opposed to people that just really want to see the facts and be informed, as opposed to having opinions and, you know...
Yeah, no, yeah, Evan and I were effective on the one where we, they claimed we were just giving, that the CHFs were free tech, they weren't paying taxes, you know. The old Kronos got, got basically attacked, and then he left, and like, no, that's not quite the, how the story went. And it was nice of her to acknowledge that we were helpful, but, yeah, I just think...
Yeah, because not everybody's going to do all social media, so we got to get those people, but if we just, if you did have something, and you just kept pounding it out there, where people started to realize that they get information, and, you know, people on social media will start pointing people towards it, and you might actually get some more traction, and get a lot better communication, because for some reason, people don't seem to go to the website as much as...
I mean, if we were a corporation, and, you know, we're running $150 million operations, we were, one of our focuses would be communication and outreach to our customers, our clients. And, you know, we've got 36,000 of them, and, you know, that's sort of an area that I think we all acknowledge that we're, you know, we're a little bit lacking in. So I welcome any suggestions going forward, and what we can do to, to do that, you know, but...
Well, you know, once you get the content going, then you can start to expand or change the, you know, the stream that you send it to.
And the library does a great job, and the senior center does a nice job. The problem is, is what about everybody else? And I think that's what we can try to do.
And, and to make it timely, you know, there's some communities, I know that the town manager will issue a so-called newsletter every, every month, or whatever, and you look at it, and the last one is like 2018, you know, a year's old, or at least months old.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're at meeting minutes?
I'll make a mo...
Does anybody have any comments on the 10, October 13th, before the motion?
There he is.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the, this was the joint?
No, this was the listening session.
Oh, this is the traffic listening session, October 13th, 2021 meeting minutes.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four, one absent.
He was absent then, too.
Huh?
He was absent then, too.
Okay. For the December 20th minutes, I missed something when I reviewed them, the date at the front page says December 6th, so that just needs to be amended to say December 20th, in the upper left corner of the first page. The footer is fine, it says December 20th. Pat, you're frowning.
Okay, I thought there was, okay.
And what I had, it said December 6th.
Yeah, I thought it was the December 6th.
No, it's December 20th, I checked that. Go ahead, Ken.
Anything else?
No.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for the December 20th, 2021 select board meeting.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four with one absent. January 3rd, any comments?
I'll make a motion to approve the January 3rd, 2022 work session minutes.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four with one absent. January 10th, any comments?
I read the draft for informative purposes, but that was it.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from the January 10th, 2022 select board meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, abstentions?
Aye.
Three in favor, one abstention, one absent. Liaison reports, Pat?
Are you going to do the announcement of the determination under meeting minutes?
Oh, I'm sorry. I totally missed that. Mark, do you want to read that one as the clerk?
What is that?
Never mind, I'll do it. It's on the agenda, the announcement of determination of releaseability.
Of release of executive session minutes, minutes not released, December 13th, 2021, joint meeting with the school committee.
Okay, thank you, Pat. Now liaison reports. Pat?
Okay. First of all, I want to congratulate Deputy Police Chief Dana Hearn on his retirement from the Chelmsford Police Force, and entering into his new, the next chapter of his life. He's definitely going to be missed, he's a good guy. This last Friday, I joined with State Representatives Vanna Howard and Tammy Guevaya at the senior center, where they hosted a program called Coats for Vets. They had gotten donations of hundreds of, of winter coats from Ocean, Ocean State Joblots that they were giving out to, to veterans. It was a, a good event, they quickly ran out of coats, but they took down information, and will get even more coats out to, out to vets, and it was definitely a, a good event, we had a good turnout, and there was even coverage from WCAP Radio 980 there. And, and lastly, Reverend Bob Noy, I don't know if anybody on the, on the board knew of him, he taught school in Chelmsford, he was the principal at the Wesleyan School for a long time, he was an Air Force veteran, he also served three terms on the Chelmsford Library Board of Trustees. He, and he used to come to the Veterans Breakfast every month, and he would always offer a prayer before we, we had our breakfast. He passed away last week, he was an amazing person, he's definitely going to be missed, so condolences to his family.
Thank you, Pat. Mark?
No, I don't.
Ken?
No, just like Pat said, the send-off for the deputy chief of Hearn was great, he gave a wonderful speech, and we wish him the best.
Thank you. I have a couple from the school committee, their next meeting, which is February 1st, next week, the superintendent will be presenting preliminary budget recommendations for fiscal '23. So folks will have the opportunity to look over the budget, and there will be a public hearing at the school committee's meeting on March 1st. Also, at the February 1st meeting, they expect to have Doran Whittier returning to... to work on finalizing a new building project proposal to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority later this spring. From the Finance Committee, they voted on recommendations, as you heard earlier, for special town meeting and expect those to be available on the website shortly, if they're not there already. I think they should be there already. And they are also planning to review the fiscal '23 budget and the Spring Town Meeting warrant articles at some point in February. And those meetings will be held Thursdays at 6:30 via Zoom. And they are encouraging any public comment, which is always welcome. I just wanted to give a couple of thank yous. You don't notice it unless you're sitting here, but Chelmsford Telemedia took some feedback from some of the folks that meet in this room and just did some changes to our monitor configurations. And I think it's, for me anyway, it worked out very well for these hybrid meetings. So I want to thank them for the, kind of taking the feedback from folks and doing the quick turn. And I also want to give a huge thank you to our new Recording Secretary, Christine Martin Barraford, and also to our former Recording Secretary, Vivian Merrill. They've just done a phenomenal job catching us up with all the Select Board Minutes. And we're all caught up now. So thank you so much for all of your efforts, Christine, and for Vivian for supporting that. I don't see any press. And it is 9:30.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Four, zero.